Good evening and welcome to the March 13th, 2023 meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. Call this meeting to order. We have before you a full agenda. In fact, it's two pages. Are there any changes? Anything anybody needs to modify from on the agenda? Okay.
Just one small thing. I was hoping to be able to take off the two birthday cake celebration and stuff at eight forty-five. I wonder if we can even get to like the town updates I have. If not, I could just push those to April. There's nothing really time sensitive on those two updates, the lane use and historic preservation.
Yeah.
That's okay with everyone else.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
Sounds good. I'm fine with that. All right. All right, let's see. Without objection, we'll consider those approved. Before you, you have three sets of minutes. One set is from the closed session that we held on February 7th, then from the February 13th council meeting and then the February 27th special town council meeting. And we've all had a chance to look at those in advance. Are there any, any last minute changes for those? If not, we will consider those approved as presented. Next on the agenda is presentations by residents. Mr. Almy, you are on our agenda. If you'd like to join us, come on up to the microphone and and tell us your, your name and address, please. Sure. Or you could use the, the rolling cart. So we just need your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is David Almy and I have got a proposal that I would like to present to the town. And it seemed to me that in particular, because we are coming up on our 124th
125th.
Anniversary, this would be a good time to do this. But what it is, when they, when they did the remodeling to the town, to the pen place and put in the balcony above the post office, there's a ledge there that's about that wide. And I thought, man, what a great place to have a train. Because here we are, Garrett Park, named after John Garrett, who was the president of the B and O Railroad. And so working.
Yeah, yeah.
Kayla, can you signal?
I don't really need it.
But we do.
So anyway, it seemed to me that in particular, because our own anniversary is coming up, it would be a great time to put a train on that ledge. And so I've done a drawing and I wrote a letter and I've done a little research. I don't know what you people have. But I did a plan of and an elevation of the town post office. And then I did a rendering showing what it would look like. And then I did a little research. And I've got a one of the hobby shop, one of my great places in Rockville. And they have a book here on trains that are available. Model trains, I might add. And I took out a example of one of the trains that I thought would be appropriate for this town. And that would be one of the old puffer buildings with the, with the spark arrestor, if you recall, the old, that was a spark arrestor and a couple of cars to go on the balcony. Now, my first idea was that it would be a moving train. And I spoke to some friends and had, who were events and people that had done a Tony Alton or people that built trains and it, it got to be a little bit ridiculous where you have to build a trestle around. Now, I would just have a permanent display. And do you guys have a drawing there?
Yes, yes.
All right. Well, you can see what I've shown is the train on the balcony. And then because I have done in the fifty-three years that I've lived in Garrett Park, I have drawn every single Victorian house in town. And so my proposal would be that we take drawings of some of the houses. And the, if you can see on the, on the left, far left is the train station. And on the far right is the town hall. And I've got the, the, I want to put the school, the one room schoolhouse, but several houses. What I could do would be take these drawings, some of them, as I have shown in the drawing, and enlarge them and fix them to the face of the balcony. And then the train would be going by them. Unfortunately, the, there used to be a really great train shop up in Kensington, which is now closed. And, and there, there might be a possibility that somewhere I can find, it's what they call a G-grade train, fairly good-sized engine. If I could find one that somebody owned that wasn't running anymore because this isn't going to run, we could do it for less money. But as, and I think I said in a letter there, I went to a hobby shop up in Rockville and found out some prices. So I've got, I think I saw around fifteen hundred bucks, which would purchase the engine for cars and enough track to run along the balcony. And I think this would be just a great thing for the town of Garrett Park. Here we are, named after John Garrett, the president of the B and O, with a track running fifteen feet aside the pen place. And to put that in, in the post office.
I think it's a really cool idea.
Maybe a crazy idea, but that's what I'm proposing. I'd like you to consider doing that.
Do you have any ideas of any folks who might have the, the appropriate, the correct trains that, you know, like, is there somebody?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Phil's, Phil's dad was the B and O Railroad B and O train, or no, line-up train salesman. And so he knows something about it. If, I mean, I myself, when I searched, researched and tried to find a G-scale train, it can't be
Little baby one.
And I didn't see it at the moment. I want people to be coming, be able to come in and see. And I must have been, when I first thought it was going to be a running train, if your husband or somebody warned me that I want to put a a piece of plastic in front of the trains so that if one were to derail it, it wouldn't come off. This is, this is not a move. It should be a, a permanent, permanent display.
But if somebody pushed it, would it fall?
Nobody can get to it.
Okay. You could also sweep it down. Yeah, you could secure it.
From the top of the, down here, you couldn't, you couldn't reach over and touch it.
Okay.
And, you know, as a matter of fact, one of the costs is to buy enough track to go along here. Now, I confess that the only people that would ever see the track would be somebody looking over the edge. So if we really wanted to save money,
We don't need it.
Draw.
Right.
The track.
Right.
But for the little amount of money that it costs, line up a real track, I thought, well, we would do that.
Thank you. This is, this is a really cool idea. I am not sure how, like, where this would fit in what kind of budget item or
I had a suggestion in that regard. I noticed that we have a line item in the budget for ad hoc. What was it called? Personally, I, I consider this an art installation. But I think we have like an ad hoc, oh, let me find the budget here.
With the groups and sponsorships?
Yeah, sponsorships. I considered this to be sort of an artistic sponsorship activity that if we wanted to add money, we could add it under that line item and that would be fairly easy.
Barb, what do you think about that as a, as a place? Cause I, we, we need to discuss whether we want to, you know, if this is something we want to do, but is that the appropriate?
Otherwise, you could put it under pen place facility because it's a permanent art exhibition.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry too much about the money. If it's something you want to do, I'll talk to Mary and we'll find the right account number.
Okay. Is this, is this something that we need to? Does anybody have any comments they want to make? I mean,
I like the idea in general, but I'm concerned about putting the train down there. Like, I don't think it would be a problem now, but I think like, if, if this was in a hotel, we would never really have a train there where somebody could be tempted to reach over and try to grab it. Because if, if they do, whether or not the train stays on the track is not really the issue. It's somebody falling off that top ledge. I don't think we want to, I think we want to think before we put something out there that might tempt somebody to, as crazy as that sounds, to lean over and try to touch it. The other thing is we've got to take a look at what the perspective is when you come in the door there. That's really, that, that shelf makes like a smoke shelf for the lower level. Comes out kind of far. So I think we'll have to put the graphics up higher on that wall to make them so they're seen from, from down below. And maybe wonder like, is, is it something where maybe a mural above all the mailboxes could be more seen, better seen? Maybe there's even a shelf or maybe even a space for a running train like there or and over in the other, the alcove where the history box is. It would be kind of cool to have it run. But maybe that's an alternative.
He's, he's come, he's, he's sharing some alternate ideas for, for, for some, for some.
You cannot reach over and touch the train.
Right. But that doesn't necessarily stop a kid or stop somebody from trying to. So that people are questionable, but let's, I would, I'd like to explore options. I think it's a really good thing, but I don't think we want to take it up right now.
Right. We, we could work out the details later, although I would recommend that we could consider putting some money, since it is such a very small amount in the budget tonight. So it's there for us to allow us to explore. Especially in light of the connection to the anniversary. I, I think that is, you know, a really good reason to not put this off.
I would still suggest maybe taking a look at that little alcove room to see if maybe there could be a running train around the ceiling in there. Instead, let's fix one up top. So that's something I think, you know, Dave.
Let's explore.
Has interest in looking at it.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Let's look into that and think, and see if there's, see what we can do. But I think we, it sounds like there's unanimous support for, for at least setting aside some funds and doing something with this. Is that, we can do that when we get to the budget. So thank you. Mr. Almy, thank you.
I think you should plan on doing something for the anniversary.
But not necessarily, but, but don't do anything yet.
Right. Don't buy anything yet.
She knows Dave well.
We are planning to do some, since we can try to contact, you know, see what, and I remember, and I don't recall what the what the event was, but I remember several years ago, they brought some old trains into town for some celebration. It were on a railroad track just for a short while. And so, I mean, what we're doing in our class is seeing perhaps we can find out what they're planning on doing with their celebration and maybe they can participate in our time.
It's cool.
But I mean, Garrett Park being named after John Garrett, who was the president of the B and O, it seemed to me to be.
And we sure do hear those trains every day. We're very aware.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Vote on your, your artwork.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Let's see. I believe there is a resident on Zoom who also wanted to address us.
Yeah, I believe it was Melissa had called in. Yep.
Hello, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, if you could please give your name and address.
I will. Melissa Brown is 11107 Kennelworth Avenue. Dave Almy, I don't know his scenario, which he's not a hard act to follow, but I will do my best. Chris has his hand up. I'm not sure. Do you want to take that first?
You can go ahead, Melissa.
Okay. I first want to thank every member of the council and the mayor for their volunteer service in helping our town to run well. I think sometimes we have some animated discussions around issues in this that sometimes gets lost. So I, please accept my sincere thanks for all that you do for the town. Now onto my suggestion, which I made on the town listserv. I've noticed that one of the main number of posting, the subject that is posted almost more than any other on our town listserv is concerns dog poop. And the fact that it's not picked up or it's not disposed of properly. And I would like to suggest to the town that you consider, that the town consider greatly increasing the number of doggy poop stations that are around the town. I think that might help to alleviate the angst and anger that is about on this issue. And when I posted on the list, if someone did mention to me that the dog station at the tennis courts is not, is broken or only half there or something. That is it.
Is there a, a part of town that you notice this being a bigger problem than others? Like if we were to explore this and, and think about where to put a, a dog poop station or, or multiple?
I, I'd be happy to help look at that. I myself don't find this to be an enormous problem. I, I just, I mean, it's, it's just about every couple of weeks, somebody posts and they seem very upset about it and they seem to think it's a big issue and people, you know, so I don't, I don't know. I, I only know of a few stations that I, I know about. I think we could have a lot more. I think this is a dog-friendly town and it would be good to have them, you know, very conveniently located.
All right. Thank you for that. I think we probably, thank you so much, Melissa. I think we probably need to consider how often they would need to get serviced and, and I presume that it would be our guys who would, who would pick it up and.
And how many do we have now? And where are they? And where should we add them? And how many more should we add?
Perhaps we could set a, perhaps we could ask the town staff to do a little bit of research on the topic along those lines and then set a date by which they would report back to the council.
Yeah, I mean, there are, you know, obviously there's trash cans at some locations without the bags next to them. And then there's places that have that, both the bags and the receptacles. So.
Exactly. I was just about to bring up to make sure that the receptacles are also within the same vicinity. All right.
That's bubbled up before people putting the, the bags and trash cans and aren't theirs too. That's bubbled up before. I've, I've even seen them, luckily not at my house, but neighboring houses where they're just left on the sidewalk next to the trash, little blue bags. So.
Yuck. So Barb, Kayla, did you look into that for us? And happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, good idea.
Chris Keller, you had your hand raised. Did you want to chime in?
Yes. I'm not sure what it says about going after Dave Almy and dog poop, but enlarging on Melissa's observation. I, I want to thank mayor council and particularly the office staff for the tremendously improved volume and quality of materials that come out in advance of meetings. It really helps us understand what the issues that you'll be addressing are. And I understand that notwithstanding the fact that it's later in the agenda, you would like me to make, or if I have remarks, I should make them now. I would like to address the notion of fee increases. In the past, when we looked into fee increases, we could not do so unless we had them fairly closely aligned with the actual costs associated with the fee. In other words, you couldn't simply pull a number out of, out of the air. If that's still the case, then I believe the increase in the variance fee is very much warranted. Indeed, it might even be a little higher than the recommended $1,000, since the town is now employing legal counsel for much more of that process. That's a very salutary development, but it has costs associated with it. And I think they should be reflected in the variance fee. Conversely, some of the other fees may be difficult to raise quite so much because the town relies so heavily on volunteer help, most notably George Martin. And it, it may be necessary to somehow quantify those in order to raise the fees. I, in addition to very much appreciating the, the information that comes out in advance of meetings, I think the increased use of some contract help for some things that used to be done in-house is also a salutary development. That said, I was somewhat surprised by a $40,000 cost associated with some traffic studies that are very much the kind of thing that used to be done in-house. And indeed, the memo in support of that makes mention of at least one thing where the town office obtained the views of, of the town maintenance staff. And I'm, hope that when it comes time to evaluate whether really a full $40,000 is warranted for those for those tasks, you, you'll do it with a fairly sharp pencil. That seems like an awful lot of money. That was about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Is there anyone, any other residents who wanted to make comments? Okay, not hearing any. It's, let's see, the time is seven fifty-five and got the town manager's report.
Thank you. I'll start off with just providing some highlights for the February financial report. As noted in my memorandum, our year-to-date income tax receipts are significantly higher than for the same time period in recent years. Much of that appears is due to a very large payment we received in January for unknown reasons. As I've mentioned, when you had your special town council meeting on the 27th of February, there were a number of changes made by the state during the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically filing deadlines were extended. There was a lack of enforcement. All of those factors may be somewhat inflating this year's receipts. It's a little unclear. I, I did talk to a colleague to see if they were experiencing anything similar. This was someone with Chevy Chase Village. They also received a significantly higher payment in January. They were advised that their inflated January impairment was the result of two to three late filers who had cashed out a significant capital gains profit. Not saying that's the case in our situation, but that's possible. I also wanted just to note that our investment earnings are running very high, actually above the adjusted amount we did at mid-year because of high interest rates. So with four months to go in the fiscal year, our year-to-date receipts already exceed the budgeted amount by approximately $7,500. So those are the only highlights I really wanted to provide about the February financial report. Obviously, you'll be talking a lot more about finances later in the meeting. Just a couple of other items. I'll just go through rather quickly. We did have the deadline for proposal submissions for the RFP for architectural services associated with town hall. We received three proposals. They're currently in the process of being reviewed to make sure that the submissions met the technical requirements of the town's RFP. Hope to be bringing something back to you at your April meeting. With regard to the town office renovation, there were some questions that came up both during, from lumber and light, as well as from one of the bidders for town hall that prompted me to do some digging into whether or not the use of ARPA funds triggered any special procurement requirements, including payment of prevailing wage. You would have thought this was a question that would have been readily researched and apparently it had not been. So I touched base with the town attorney, also requested guidance from Hagerty Consulting. They're a firm retained by the state of Maryland to assist non-entitlement units, such as the town of Garrett Park. I did finally receive that guidance from Hagerty Consulting on February 28th. With that guidance in hand, Kayla and I have a meeting scheduled with lumber and light during the, later this week on Wednesday. So hopefully we'll be getting that project back on course.
So is the, are we required for prevailing wage?
We, we are not. It is encouraged, but not mandated.
Okay.
And as far as any other kind of procurement requirements, we're required to follow our own procurement policies, obviously, but there's nothing in terms of Davis Bacon or any other type of special procurement requirements that came out of that, which is good news. At your special town council meeting on the 27th of February, you gave, gave your blessing to go ahead and proceed with execution of a contract with Revise to start work on the new town website. That contract has been signed and certainly if there's any questions, Kayla has already been working with them to get that project going. Kayla has also notified our current provider of our intent to terminate the contract when it expires in June. Probably the last major item I wanted to mention has to do with the wall repair at the pool property. I think everyone's aware that sometime ago I executed a task order with Clark Azar or engineering services associated with the repair of the Masonry Wall on the pool property. Part of that task order scope did include a property survey to pick up the limits of the settlement, including the area of the dog park. And that survey has been completed. I was informed of that last week. Just given that we're about two and a half months out before the pool is opening, talked to Mr. Azar about just sort of the structural integrity of the wall and just the time sensitivity of making a repair. Because certainly the last thing I want to do is have work started and have it negatively impact the pool operations. Mr. Azar indicated that in his judgment and that of the structural engineer, the repair could certainly be deferred, probably even for a couple of years. Not suggesting that, but I would suggest that that repair be deferred until after the pool season.
Did Mr., did he tell you how long he thought the work would take to do it?
He did not. I think they just got the survey. So the structural engineer is going to start working out details. I think the other reason, in my opinion, that warrants deferring the work is there are different ways to repair that wall. And I think it warrants you all talking about those. But my primary consideration is just not doing anything that might impact the pool. My, I imagine that long before Memorial Day, they're gearing up for their opening and we really only have about two months, practically speaking.
We'll take that back to the pool board because my concern is the walls already started to collapse in certain areas. And so we're going to have to probably put up a fence or something, I guess, around that area to prevent kids from getting over there because it has started to go. For sure, understand the idea of you know, having to wait because of the time. So.
I can also see if Mr. Azar might be able to come out. I don't know that he felt there was anything structurally unsafe that posed an immediate hazard, but I will share that information with him. I'll shoot him an email.
Well, I can talk with him too.
Yeah, feel free to do that. So just reach out to him directly if you'd like.
Yeah, because I had talked, I was there and he had said about four to six weeks is what his estimate was, you know, once things got going to do it. So.
Yeah, but I think, I think the piece about making sure that we know what the options are for repair, I think that's
Yeah.
That, that needs to be.
So for clarity, is the wall strictly structurally sound or not?
I'm sorry, is the wall structurally?
So for clarity, is the wall strictly structurally sound or not? I'm sorry, is the wall structurally sound or not?
Um, my understanding is not in eminent need. Yeah, there certainly, when I asked Mr. Azar, you know, is there time sensitivity to this work? He, he certainly did not feel it needed to be done immediately. Um, in fact, thought it could be probably put off within the range of a couple of years. What Phil is sharing is sort of new information.
No, it was there that the wall harsh part of it collapsed because we talked about it cuz I was there when he was there. So, um, yeah, I don't see, I mean, I think it's probably better off to, to put it off for a while, but I think we're still gonna have to look at doing maybe a.
Yeah. I mean, I, I certainly would suggest that we get this back on your agenda within the next, you know, month, a couple of months. Just so it doesn't, the issue doesn't linger. I don't think there's a reason for that, uh, to be put off for very long. I just really don't want to interrupt the pool operations at all.
No, yeah, and that makes sense. And the other thing too is that I can discuss later on if we want what the options are for, there's three different options, and I actually wanted to talk to Chris Keller before.
Yeah, and I can, um, Mr. Azar sent me kind of a list of possible options. I can certainly share those with the mayor and town council via email as well. Um, but I think there were a few more than three, Phil, so you can kind of look at that and fill in the blanks if you would.
Okay.
Do we want to put this on the agenda for next month, even if we're not going to be doing the work until early fall?
It certainly wouldn't hurt. I don't think it, I think it's always better just to sort of deal with issues while they're before us and not let them linger. Okay, so then let's do that.
Um, I think unless. Real quick while we're on that, I wonder if there, there's a couple of spots where bricks came loose. I think they just kind of spalled off. I wonder if those can't just be, um, mortared back into place just so they're kept track of and the walls kind of intact there, just for, just for this year.
Yeah.
Just a temporary job.
Yeah, I'll talk to, to George Miller about that in the morning. Um, some of them looked like they were sort of, I wouldn't say jerry-rigged, but sort of mortared in.
Yeah, and there's a whole section on the, on the far side closest to the road where probably about four feet, but it's broken off and slid down slightly, and that's still, that was the concern. The rest of it looked actually halfway decent.
Um, so unless there's any other questions, um, that concludes my report. Certainly would be happy.
A couple, uh, requests for clarification. The RFP for Architectural Services for the Town Hall, um, what is the process that you're, um, going upon, you know, putting together to review?
Yeah. Um, the RFP qualifications actually assigned percentages to different, you know, pricing, quality of the proposal, creativity, things like that. Kayla has taken a look at them. Uh, the mayor has been looking at them. I'm going to do so now the budget at least is delivered to you all. And then, as I said, part of it is actually matching up the proposals against what the technical requirements were. And um, at first glance, I admit with the budget, I haven't gone through them, you know, page to page. I have a feeling that the pricing may not be representative of kind of apples-to-apples comparison, and I need to dig into that a little further this week.
And your, um, committee, I guess you could say, is yourself, Kayla and the mayor.
We're the ones who are looking at them at this time, correct?
Very good. Um, I second question about the town office renovation. This question about the ARPA funds triggering any special procurement requirements, where did that originate? That's surprising.
It came from, um, two sources. So one of the prospective bidders for Town Hall, um, asked a number of detailed questions. I think it was a logical question for someone to ask, because prevailing wage can obviously, um, inflate cost. So they, you know, they ask about that. Um, I think the same bidder asked, you know, clarity for clarification on kind of historic preservation review requirements. Additionally, lumber and light, um, wanted to make sure that they had a good understanding of the town's procurement procedures. I asked them to kind of hold up once I got the question from the prospective bidder on Town Hall because I didn't want them starting to do, meaning lumber and light, doing any outreach if there were certain requirements that had to be followed because of the use of ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
Is, what's your timing for reviewing and, um, presenting the RFP and going forward?
For Town Hall? My hope would be to have it on your April meeting agenda.
Great. I'd like to see the proposals too.
Yeah, I can send you all electronic copies of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all, Barb?
Yes.
Okay, so is this the, um, is this a good spot for, uh, Councilmember Paskowski to, to do his updates set?
I thought we were just kind of pushed them to April.
Oh, to April. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I misunderstood. Okay, all right. Then, uh, let's see, time is, uh, 8:07 and, um, the next item on our agenda is adoption of, uh, ordinance 2023 dash one, which, uh, would allow the opting in of Montgomery County, Chapter 29, uh, landlord-tenant relations um, regarding the leasing of rental, you, of rental units in town. We've talked about this a few times and, um, heard from several people, um, before we call that or do a vote for that, what, what would like to hear council members, what, uh?
The only thing I would like to.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
I was going to say, um, I would like to make a couple of points in regard to this, um, the adoption of this code. After asking additional questions and, um, having, thank you, Mayor, for, for giving me some feedback as to jurisdictions and what opt backing, opting back in, uh, with the possibility would be and what the responsibilities of both, Garrett Park as a town, uh, the, uh, renters, um, the rentees and, uh, and Montgomery County, uh, would be in all the aspects in regard to this, um, into this county code. Uh, I'm not concerned, but I am confident and comfortable with the status quo as it is, uh, for a number of reasons. Um, one, our, our responsibility is number one, first and foremost, to the town of Garrett Park and its citizens. Uh, and having this additional, um, process, uh, started, I think, is not, um, is not as beneficial as it would be otherwise at this point. Uh, we've managed to process everything up until this point, um, quite satisfactorily. Uh, by not opting in, we are also, um, not, uh, preventing any renters or rentees from, from bringing any issues to light, uh, with Montgomery County, um, from what I understood.
Well, that's actually not true. Um, Montgomery County affirmatively has no jurisdiction and they would send them back to us, so it would be.
But there is a, there are, um, other aspect, other ways to do this. For instance, Tacoma Park has its own, uh, arbitration council in this case, uh, should there be any issue. Uh, and it's, I believe, is set up with the, the council members or individuals from the town as part of this arbitration council, if it comes to that point. Uh, there are at least five towns, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, three cities and two towns, three towns, uh, that are not opted in, uh, to Tacoma Park, uh, Latens, the town of Latens. Those, I think, uh, ourselves and a couple of others. So they all have their own, um, processes for this. I've not heard or understood of any issues that have come across in the last, in the number of years that this has not been opted into. Uh, so increasing individuals', uh, requirements for fees, licenses, inspections, what have you. I'm not sure, I'm not confident that this is the time for it. And there's nothing preventing us from opting in at another time.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to clarify, obviously I worked for Tacoma Park for a number of years. Um, they actually have their, um, they do have a commission on landlord and tenant affairs, um, very similar to what the county has. Tacoma Park has jurisdiction over its all rent, its own rental licensing program. It's quite robust. They have, don't know how many they have now. During the time I was there, there were at least four dedicated staff members to rental licensing. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, they've essentially kind of mirrored what the county does internally, but they do have their own rental licensing program. So there are some differences between us, just.
What is the advantage? Why would they put the time and energy and people towards doing it as opposed to letting the county do it? What's the advantage?
Um, I think it's a very different situation. About half of the housing units in Tacoma Park are rental, um, in nature, so, you know, clearly it's, I think, having those buildings maintained and, they, they just put a lot of effort, I think, into making sure that tenants' rights are protected. Tacoma Park, I, there may be one or two now. I think I just read another municipality in Maryland adopted it, but up until probably the last year or so, Tacoma Park was also the only municipality in the state of Maryland that had rent control. Um, so it's just a very different animal than us, um, but part of that is certainly the degree of rental housing that they have.
Does Rockville also have their own, something they did?
Yes, they, they do. I would say it's, um, it, it's probably not quite as intensive. Tacoma Park contracts with the county, um, to do inspections of their rental units, um, on a certain schedule. Uh, Rockville, um, unless they've changed it since I left, um, the process is much simpler for a landlord and for tenants, but they, they do certainly have review procedures internally because they, they chose to take on licensing themselves.
But should we opt in, Montgomery County has the authority then to come into Garrett Park, um, do inspections, uh, fees, permits, et cetera?
Yes, I don't think there's any doubt that opting into Chapter 29 certainly would give tenants certain protections they currently don't have by law. It also would impose certain, um, obligations on landlords that don't currently exist either. So it's kind of a two-sided coin, and obviously as the policymakers on behalf of the town, you, you guys need to weigh those two things.
I was under the impression. I'm sorry, say.
Uh, sorry, are, are there protections for the owners as well? Like if there's a problem tenant to?
There are, that's correct, yeah.
So, or if the neighbors have a problem with the tenant, so.
Right, it does, um, you know, really the, as I recall, the portions that are in state law regarding the rental of property is fairly minimal. It really has to focus primarily on security deposit, but you're correct, Stephen. There are certain protections in Chapter 29 for landlords as well.
And as I recall, the, our attorney said that we, if there was a problem that opting out, if we continue to opt out, we wouldn't have any liability. Garrett Park would have no liability in the event of a catastrophe or a fire or whatever.
But we would have the obligation to arbitrate or, or, or participate in, in remedying the situation, no, Barb? I mean, the fact that by opting out, we are saying that we are responsible for it and we're just not taking responsibility for being responsible. Is that?
I, I, I think we're, we don't really have a program, so I can't say we're responsible. I think it sort of creates a a, a vacuum, if you will, in terms of perhaps expectations on someone's part that we have something to do with this area and we, we simply do not. Um, so Lisa is correct. I think the town attorney had opined that um, it's, it's unlikely that if something happened, um, that the town could be held liable. I had followed up, as he recommended, with the local government insurance trust, and they basically kind of said it's really more of a legal issue for your town attorney. You know, I think anything that we would do, um, I certainly wouldn't say that we should have a commission on landlord-tenant affairs because I don't think we're really, you know, that usually assumes that you're administering a program, which we would not have. Really, the only role the town could, could offer, I guess, would be some sort of informal facilitation or mediation, but that might be something that we would want to actually contract out because I'm not sure that we necessarily have the skill set to do that.
Or the staff, or the time.
Right. Yeah. I mean.
We contracted out, we have to pay for it then. And then it would be a dicey thing. I, I sure wouldn't want to be asked to go mediate on something like that, you know, for neighbors. So it's a tricky, tricky wicket. And I looked into the issue a little bit in general because I just never really thought about it before. Like I, I used to live in New York City and had an apartment there and other places, and like DC had an apartment, um, but never really was familiar with these kind of things, but I didn't know how common or uncommon it was, but I looked into it. It seems like half the counties in Maryland or about half have landlord-tenant laws, except for municipalities that can do their own. And it's all of the, all the urbanized areas. So it's really just rural areas that have it. So you know, just looking around our town, you could step out in any different direction. It's under control of the county. I don't know that there's roving trucks of, you know, inspectors wandering around every day. I don't know that would be like a really big onerous thing for oversight. Um, but I do feel like it's a little unusual for us to be one of the rare exceptions where you know, the whole county basically has this and the adjoining counties also have it, and then all of a sudden we have one little half-square-mile town that doesn't have it. I feel like it's the, the idea of the town, you know, municipality is, has the idea or has the ability to add to laws or do their own laws that are, you know, maybe a little bit different, more stringent than what's underlying at the county or state level. I feel like it shouldn't be used to, to not have any law at all or any regulation. I'm not a fan of regulation by any stretch, so that's just you know, my philosophy on this one here. It's just, it's just we're, we're abnormal not having anything. So I would kind of lean towards if the county can do it and it's very little cost to us and no hassle to us, or there's no cost to us really, no hassle to us, then I feel like it makes sense.
To us currently either.
It's not a hassle to, right, I agree with you. It's not a hassle to us.
Right.
And I also think it's a problem in search of, or a solution in search of a problem. Um, and I will go on to say that even if you have some of these things where you can, uh, where the landlord is trying to eject the tenant, if you look at a lot of cases, it could take 90 days or more and require a lot of work to do it, so it's not necessarily all, all roses, you know, with that side of the fence either.
Yeah, I'm saying that there's, there's probably two sides to the coin of what, what they regulate. And, and there already is the one issue where if you, if you try to do a, a dwelling unit legally now, you'll be stopped by the county because they don't have authority and then they're, they're finding that the town doesn't do it either, so.
Right, so on the lack of a hassle issue, I, I would like to make sure we are clear on that because we would be obligated to come up with some sort of process to deal with that particular void, right, right now? If somebody wants to get their permit to build an accessory dwelling unit, there is a void of jurisdiction there. Isn't that correct?
Correct. Right, there's no, there's limbo.
Right, so we'd be obligated to address that point. If we had landlords coming to us because they had a tenant that they couldn't evict, we wouldn't be able to help them because we don't have a process for it. The county wouldn't be able to help them because they're not, they don't, wouldn't have any jurisdiction. If we had tenants who are complaining about health and safety standards, they couldn't get any help from Montgomery County because there's no jurisdiction and we have no process nor any means to inspect or provide any sort of support for health and safety of tenants. Even if these complaints haven't happened in the past, doesn't mean that they couldn't happen, and it doesn't mean that they haven't happened. I don't really know the history, but I know there was a property on Strathmore Avenue, very close to my home, that clearly was in violation of all sorts of tenant landlord-tenant affairs issues.
And there were complaints.
And there were complaints, yeah. Right, and the town eventually, I think, did, did do some things to help deal with that. I don't, I don't know the details. But I think if there had been clear jurisdiction, it might have been a lot easier for the town to refer a problem like that to the county, and it might have been dealt with much quicker. That went on for years. Personally, I really think that it is, we, it's unrealistic to think that we will set up our own process. It would cost us money. And we haven't done it in how many years? So it's, we have a lot of other priorities to manage within the budget we have.
And a very small staff.
And a small staff. I think when it comes to health and safety issues, that is where it makes sense to make use of the county jurisdiction that we're within.
But it sounds like the, um, opposition to opting in is not for us to establish our own process, but rather to maintain status quo.
Right, which I object to. I find that to be irresponsible as a government official. I'm sorry.
And it sounds like with the accessory dwelling units that are now part of the zoning, that we're going to have potentially people wanting to get those licenses, then we are going to need some kind of a process by which we're going to make sure that those rental units are in compliance with something. I mean, isn't that, is that what's triggering, offering the idea to opt into this, Joanna? I mean, is that what we're trying to accomplish is filling the gap because of these accessory dwelling units?
If, if I may, I think it's what raised the issue.
Right.
What got it on the radar straight is.
People didn't realize before.
Yeah, I mean, we do not, we do not issue building, I mean, we don't have zoning authority. And so in the case of the resident and they're, they're on the call, so they can certainly speak for themselves. Um, they filed a building permit application to establish a legal accessory dwelling unit in the county process that. in the county process that triggered a review by DHCA or an ADU. DHCA then looked up and said, we have no jurisdiction in Garrett Park. DPS then refused to issue the building permit. Um, so the residents essentially in kind of building permit purgatory. And with our not having zoning authority and there's there's simply no way out for them.
Except opting in. If we opted in, then that would be, it would be, they would have the old made card and then it would go back to them. My only concern or my suggestion, if we do adopt this, which I think we should, would be to make sure that on our website, we have a clear link to tell tenants exactly what they need to do and the process and who to call and.
And landlords.
Right. And landlords, right. So that at least if we do adopt this, people would, because I've talked to people who have rental units in the town and they're like, what do I do? How do I do it? Like, you know, so I think we're gonna, if we opt in, which I would be in favor of, um, I think we would have to have some kind of a link to a website to explain to people how to get the process started and what they need to do.
If if I may, it it is not necessarily, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to pretend to be one, but I'm of the impression that should a tenant or landlord have issue and there is no tenant landlord uh ordinance to follow, a civil suit is possible. So it's not like no one has any recourse whatsoever. That's not true.
Well, I'm talking about getting a license for an ADU.
Right. Well, it's I'm just responding to the the argument that we're leaving people high and dry without any recourse to solving issues should they rise, which is not necessarily the case.
But we still don't have a process by which somebody can get a license permit for an accessory.
We don't have that anyway, so and.
Right, but.
Nothing's happening.
This this side accessory to the whole thing is when I I participated in a ton of hearings when the ADU um zoning change was being proposed, um, a lot of committees around the county and it was one of the big things that kept coming up over and over again is that the um, one of the big reasons the county was pushing to push that law was they wanted to make it a lot easier for homes that wanted to do accessory dwellings. Um, they wanted to make it as easy as possible for them. I think it's still like a pain in the butt to do it, but um, they wanted to make it easier because their big concern was especially in other parts of the county is a growing, um, you know, group of kind of unsafe building practices being built all over. A lot of people living in one unit, um, to things being built with them not up to code, so on and so forth. And just because we don't have that here yet uh, doesn't mean that it's not nearby and it's not, it couldn't come here. Because I I think there's a fair amount of that um, kind of building practice even happening just in surrounding neighborhoods, so. You know, it's.
Conversely, if this was an easier.
Big thing.
I was just saying, conversely, if this was an easier process, ADUs would be uh, more often probably applied for possibly. And perhaps that's a thought the town should take into consideration as well. Is that something we want to see?
Well, so this doesn't there's still the right to have an ADU. This is not, this doesn't um this doesn't give anybody any additional rights to have an accessory dwelling unit. It merely allows them to be um, uh, constructed in a way that is in line with um.
They'd have to be anyway, but we're sure of fact of a building permit.
Exactly.
Yeah, you could build one and you could apply for one in Garrett Park Estates tomorrow or Randolph Hills or any of those other towns. We're just different than them on this. So it's just, that's the process. So you're you're allowed by right countywide to build them. Um, and then just just that licensing is part of it. Um, it just hadn't really come up before.
I'd just like to comment on the concept that that people, that the only recourse would be to use the civil court system. I I think it's one thing to expect a landlord perhaps to have to take that recourse, but for us to say that we think it's um appropriate to expect renters who are more likely to have or in my view, are more likely to have less means at their disposal or understanding of the civil court system to have that be their only recourse to deal with a potentially unsafe environment. I still think that that is not really an appropriate plan for us to have for those situations.
We're kind of fortunate. We don't really have those issues too much, but being a former NYC resident, I used to see some of it and um, hear about it, so.
Going back to.
So things are appreciated by some people.
Sorry, Donna, go ahead.
Say this goes back to Phil's point that are we looking for a problem for a solution?
So, but there is a problem. I mean, we have a resident who has not been able to build the uh ADU that he wants to build solely because he's trying to do this by the books and not have it be um you know, uh.
He wants a licensed.
He wants, he wants a licensed unit. He doesn't want to cheat the system.
Somebody, right. And right now we don't have anybody to inspect it. We can't issue a license.
I think he's going to be inspected anyway. If it's a, it's a, if it is an additional unit, it would have an inspection regardless, would it not?
No, because nobody has jurisdiction because there's nobody.
No, no, not for a rent, not for a rental or an ADU, but in general for any kind of building.
But in order, but in order to have a licensed rental unit, it has to comply with the licensing process of the county or somebody. And we don't have the bandwidth to do it.
Correct.
So everybody else in the county is doing the county's process to get a license to have a rental unit in their property. So I don't know why we can't just do that.
No, I'm just saying we've, I'm sure. There are rental units already, so.
Yeah, they're just not legal. Most cases, they're just not legal.
Right, and and to to penalize or to 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 prevent somebody from doing something legally, I I don't have a vote on this, but I I kind of I find that unsavory to um to be discouraging people from wanting to be do things on the up and up.
Yeah.
Yes, some, it's a, it's not an uncommon thing that it happens, but um, but but it is literally not following law. People will say that doing a dwelling unit that doesn't have cooking wait for the inspection. The inspector may even come in and say, hey, that looks like you're waiting to put a stove in there. And then they may quibble over that, but then you know, later on, somebody just puts a stove in. So then they have an illegal unit and then, you know, if that's maybe that's installed wrong or something else, then and it's kind of all those kind of things you get for free as oversight. We just don't don't want to get them as a town. Um, I realize that some people are trying to limit fees for the you know, percentage of renters that are in town, but then there's, you know, the rest of the town gets the benefit of having all these things.
Steve Welker, you keep raising your hand and putting it back down. You're going to make up your mind, sir.
Sorry, yeah, I just I I it's been said. I I have given you a problem and I've asked for this as the solution. So I I I don't understand that the notion that this is a solution in search of a problem. Um, and also you are, by not opting in, you are basically telling people who want to do this to do it illegally, but that's that's how I feel. Um, yes, there are ways around this and we all know the ways to get around it and you're basically telling me to do that. So thanks. That's that's all. I I I really appreciate this 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 discussion, but um, I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little upset, so I'm just gonna.
So Steve, if I understand, you would be in favor of us opting into the county to do this?
One hundred percent. Please opt into this. Yes.
Thank you.
And to me, I think there's a possible alternative of the town doing it, but I think that's the cost that just don't think far outstrip the benefits. You know, we could be looking at a third or a half of an FTE of time. So, you know, if the if all the renters in town want to pay the lion's share of that extra cost for the non-renter units in town, then maybe that's something to consider.
But again, I think that the, I think the question isn't I don't think I've heard anybody say that we should establish a process and we should do the work Garrett Park itself. I think the question is whether to maintain what we've, how it's been this thus far and just um, not have any regulation or oversight. Um, so uh, are there?
So we should vote.
Are there other comments? Or we can vote? Okay, all right. Um, let's see. Can I get a motion for this ordinance?
I would make a motion to um approve, adopt the ordinance as provided.
To opt in.
To opt into the county process, yes.
I would second that.
Okay, uh, those in favor of opting into the county?
I.
I.
I agree.
Good. And uh, those opposed?
And you're gonna vote, Joanne?
I don't vote.
You don't vote? Okay.
No.
Okay.
One. And Phil.
I agree.
Phil's four.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for sharing your perspectives on this and uh
Thank you.
And we can um.
It's approved.
It's approved, yeah.
It's approved.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda, although I'm going to take a quick breather. I need to get a drink of water.
Before the budget, need lots of breathers. What I should be doing.
Uh, the time is eight thirty two. Uh, the next item on our agenda is introducing the um twenty twenty four budget. Um, this is required step in the process. Um, and what we would be doing is is introducing the uh, the framework that we discussed um during our special council meeting on February twenty seventh. Um, and then we would have a a month holdover to to discuss and debate and uh make adjustments before bringing it back next month for adoption. So or for adoption, for adoption of the ordinance, this would be just introducing it today. So um Barb, is there anything you wanted to say or should we just introduce it?
Um, actually, if it's okay, I just wanted to kind of do a brief presentation and just provide some highlights, particularly um for anyone watching from home.
And I have a couple of questions.
Do you want me to go through this for Lisa? Okay. I can get this into advance. Um, so just kind of a quick overview of the proposed budget. Um, revenues are projected to total roughly one point seven six million. This amount includes a carryover amount of a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. That's a projection from FY twenty twenty three. Um, operating expenses are about one point four five million. I am proposing that you transfer about a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars to the capital budget. Um, and also that you transfer about a hundred and twenty one thousand to reserve accounts. I know this, um, the transfer to the reserve account is a little unusual and not something you're used to seeing. As we talked about at your meeting on September twenty seventh, um, I'm sorry, February twenty seventh, there's two reasons for that. Um, highway user funds are restricted by state law. Um, we do not have any eligible projects in FY twenty twenty three, so the entirety of the HUR would be kind of swept at year end and go to the reserve. Um, we would do the same thing for the FY twenty twenty four HUR monies. Um, I, if you advance with the road paving, that's an eligible project, so the funds would just be moved from reserve at the time that the projects are ready to move forward. Um, also sort of on the restricted front are the PEG capital funds. These are the um, public educational and governmental funds that um we receive via Montgomery Municipal Cable. Um, it's part of the franchise agreements. Those funds are also restricted. Um, the roughly sixteen thousand dollars um does take into account um, the purchase of the equipment in this room because that was an eligible expense, but basically does have prescribed uses in the franchise agreements. Um, real property taxes very quickly. Um, this is our largest town revenue source. As we talked about at the end of February, all town property was reassessed in calendar year twenty twenty. By state law, there's a three year phase in period. So FY twenty twenty four marks the third year of that phase in period. Um, our net assessable real property base is projected to increase by five point three million or roughly one point eight percent. And based on the discussion you had at the end of February, um, it is proposed that there be no change in the local property tax rate uh, zero um point two zero four five per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Um, local income taxes, we had some discussion about this earlier this evening. This is our second largest revenue source. Um, this is incredibly difficult to project. If anyone can ever figure this out, they'd have a great career as a consultant to local governments in the state. Um, basically, we are, as I mentioned earlier, seeing receipts, um, just kind of outpacing the last few years largely because of that significant January payment. Um, as I cautioned at the end of February, I do not believe that what we're seeing this year is an indicator for FY twenty twenty four. I did propose a slight increase in income tax receipts from twenty three to twenty four based on past history. Our county tax duplication payment, for those who aren't familiar with this, this is a reimbursement that the county provides for services um, that they would otherwise provide if the municipality did not exist. Um, there was legislation passed in March of twenty twenty two um to try to deal with a longstanding dispute between municipalities and the county. Among other things, it codified the formulas for each service area. It established certain timelines and it also provided for a phased in period to try to get payments up to a level that everyone could agree on. Um, we currently receive only a payment for road maintenance. Um, we'll see an increase of about eleven thousand dollars. At least that's based on the information that was publicly available last year. And the county executive is redo, um, submitting his budget uh later this week. I did request a park maintenance payment beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty four, and I'm waiting on a decision from that from the county.
How much was requested, Barb?
They actually don't have a process, Lisa. Um, so um the county has not had a request for a new park maintenance payment in all the time I've worked for the state and that goes back to two thousand and four, probably long before then. They don't have a process. They don't have a formula. Um, they couldn't provide one, so I.
So what did you request?
Um, what I submitted is the open space and the park, the um town owned park to give them some idea of our acreage and what we had. Um, the payments can run anywhere in the county. We, you know, I think Tacoma Park gets close to a hundred thousand dollars. For example, we certainly don't have the extent of parks they do. Um, Kensington, I, I'm going off memory here, gets twenty some thousand. I think Chevy Chase section three gets about four or five grand.
So you just said, here's the, here's what we're taking care of. Send us money.
Well, basically, in the, you have certain deadlines in the um tax duplication law where if a municipality is requesting a new payment, you have a firm deadline by which to request it. So the county was struggling to develop a process. I was faced with a deadline. So basically, all I could do is give them information on what we had, so they.
What we've spent?
Not what we spent because all the tax duplication process is based on what the county would otherwise spend. So they.
You just said, here's the square footage of what we're taking care of.
What we have, here's what we take care of. Please consider it. So I think they've been struggling, quite frankly, to figure out what to do with it. So I'll be curious to see the county executive's budget and see if anything's in there for us. If it's not, um, my intention is probably to go to some of the county council members because we certainly met the deadline to make the request. Oops. Something definitely seemed to want to, yeah. Okay, um, household sanitation fee, um, as we talked about before, there's no change in our contractual rate. Um, you all at your last meeting at the end of February approved an extension of the fuel surcharge. Um, kind of factoring in everything, there would be no change in the annual household assessment of three hundred and ninety five dollars. Um, so no change from last year. Um, just quickly, other revenues, we've already talked about highway user revenues.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just one quick question. If we're going, if we're not going to up the uh rate of three ninety five, but we're still paying the fuel surcharge, so that means we're just gonna, the town's gonna eat it then?
The, no, the FY twenty twenty three budget um and the three hundred and ninety five dollars contemplated the fuel surcharge in place for the entirety of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Misunderstood it.
Um, HUR is expected to be up about twelve thousand dollars. Um, you know, kind of talking about the PEG funds. Just a reminder that um we rejoined Montgomery Municipal Cable in calendar year twenty twenty two. Our membership fee is essentially their retention of the PEG operating monies and we are still receiving capital. Um, that was part of the discussion um that we had last year, just about the fact that we intend to renovate this space and there will certainly need to be some investment in in audio visual equipment and things of that nature. Um, investment earnings are are running high. Um, obviously, the Fed is trying to get inflation under control. We'll see if that happens. Um, I'm not anticipating or did not project that revenues from investment earnings would be as high in twenty twenty four as they have been in twenty twenty three. That's obviously guesswork on my part. Um, the other thing you might have noticed was in reviewing the proposed budget, um, under other receipts, which is account five point four um, is kind of a significant reduction in that account. We had a number of nonrecurring events in FY twenty twenty three that bolstered revenues. They included the sale of um a pickup truck. We got a twelve thousand dollar donation from Mrs. Yendel's representative to clear out the house. Um, and also what will, um, the federal emergency declaration for COVID um comes to an end in May, so we'll see our COVID related reimbursements coming to an end.
I would like to know about this Visa credit card points redemption. What in the world? How much do we get for that?
When we were getting it, we have um several town staff members have Bank of America uh credit. uh, credit cards. There's apparently a point they had been accumulating, so Kayla, you know, wisely kind of took it upon herself to basically redeem those points, because they had just been accumulating. And I'm moving on very quickly to operating expenses. Um, this is once again just recapping the direction you gave at the end of February. Um, the budget contemplates the continued use of contractual resources for the first half of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, though on a reduced basis with the planned purchase of the new mowers. Um, and that we have funding in the budget for the hiring of a new maintenance staff member, kind of for the latter half of the year. On the budget proposal, it contemplates a three percent wage adjustment for town staff, as you all authorized a couple of weeks ago, and also, um, a one-time lump-sum payment to offset inflationary impacts, which would be a thousand dollars for full-time staff, and that amount would be prorated for part-time staff. Um, other things just about operating expenses I wanted to call out. They mentioned just a few minutes ago, the COVID nineteen emergency declaration ends in May of twenty twenty-three. I did include, um, some reduced funding, uh, but some funding remains in the contract office assistant line item. Um, when I started, the town had hired someone to help with the kind of FEMA reporting requirements, obviously, with the declaration coming to an end, um, we will be no longer in need of his services. I did want to mention, and you have, this is on your agenda later this evening, so depending on how you resolve the traffic engineering work, um, I did want to call out to you that the professional fees line item um, does include sixteen thousand dollars in anticipated traffic engineering work in FY twenty twenty-four. Obviously, that's, um, gonna be influenced by your discussion later this evening. And then, um, the IT operations line item includes fifteen thousand dollars for the new website development. Um, lastly, also at the end of February, you all authorized the inclusion of the proposed budget of fifteen thousand dollars for continuation of the pilot compost program, which we'll be talking about in just a few minutes. A couple of things on the capital budget, and then I'll wrap up. Um, I am proposing that there be a transfer of roughly a hundred and eighty-four thousand into capital. Uh, sixty thousand dollars was earmarked in the budget proposal for equipment. We do have um, a a rather legacy truck, um, that the guys have informed me is in need of replacement. We basically have a number of projects planned for Penn Place that, um, we don't have firm cost estimates are. This is the fire alarm system, it's the painting of the building, all things that I think may be um, more expensive than we initially anticipated. The Arboretum Committee had requested an allocation on the capital side of sixty thousand dollars. Um, so this is the planting of new trees, unscheduled tree removals. Um, we had an odd amount of forty-seven hundred dollars that was just sort of parked in the capital budget for the website. Um, websites are typically operating expenses, not capital, so I was suggesting that that funding be swept and taken to zero. And then I've proposed an allocation to the contingency account in the capital fund of roughly forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, my thinking of having that much funding go to contingency is, once again, we have numerous capital projects that are the preliminary phase. We've done our best guess estimates, um, when you went through the mid-year budget projection process. But we have a lot of items where the cost is unknown. Um, so to me, it made sense to kind of book some money in the contingency account, um, just to, um, factor in that eventuality, if something may come in higher. Uh, we spent a lot of time at your meeting at the end of February, talking about, um, anticipated paving and curb work in FY twenty twenty-four. You know, we're recommending that we spend about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repay portions of Keswick and Shelley Court, do some patching work around Claremont and Oxford, and also Keswick and Oxford, and replace some curbs in a few places. Did want to call just kind of two capital projects. One is Yendel Grove. Um, you previously provided funding for certain baseline activities. Those included the demolition of the house. Um, that RFP is still in in drafting stage, as well as some general site cleanup as recommended by the Arboretum Consultant Phil Normandy. As you all undoubtedly recall, we have a pending grant application through the Community Parks and Playground Program. Um, in all likelihood, the state will not be making its announcements until after the budget is adopted, which is kind of poor timing, but that's what it is.
Yeah, Barb, that was my question. So you've got, this is an addition, you've got a hundred and twenty-seven, three oh eight, and one sixty-eight, two oh four, and line items twenty-nine, one point one, and twenty-nine point one for Yendel Grove and Parks and Open Space. So this is on top of that money?
Yes, let me, I'm sorry, Lisa, let me just get to that line item, if you don't mind.
Closer?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So it just seemed like a lot of money already that I don't know that we've have any plan to spend it.
Yeah, the the funding that is in, um, yeah, so right now we have, um, about, yeah, there's a remaining balance of about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I'm looking at my right line item here. No, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I'm looking across it, because everything's rolling up, so we have about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand that's left in that item, line item. I would say probably demolishing the house is probably, we originally estimated somewhat in the range of seventy-five thousand dollars. Just as a reminder, there is, um, sampling indicated there's asbestos floor tile and also lead paint in the.
Isn't it, isn't it, if I look at the capital funds, February twenty twenty-three, it says it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
That's correct. That's the available balance, right.
That's what you've already got.
Correct. So that will basically pay for roughly, um, as I said, we anticipated seventy-five thousand for the demolition of the house. Um, we obviously won't know if that's sufficient until we take it down, and then there are, there are some hazardous materials that are gonna require some special, um, mediation. The, um, Phil Normandy had recommended or assessed that we probably needed about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars just to clean up the site from invasives and things. So the remaining part of the grant application, um, we, there there's a couple of different state funds that are in play, but essentially, the grant application was to allow for design services.
Right.
As well as actual construction of something on the site.
Right, but this is, this is like one sixty-eight and one twenty-seven.
So that one sixty-eight is not, that is not Parks and Open Spaces Committee. That is, that's not a committee allocation.
What is it?
Uh, yeah, so let me, if I may, the the hundred and sixty-eight is a roll-up of Yendel, I, this should be changed, it's a Yendel Grove, but Yendel Park and other public spaces, the other public spaces money um, with where we kind of parked any work that was done at the, um, pending work at the community center. So we have design work that's pending now. So what's available for Yendel is a hundred and roughly a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and we're, we're gonna be over a hundred thousand just with cleaning up the site and taking the house down easily.
Barb, could I get a clarification, please, on the way you're presenting it? In the notes, it sounds like you're recommending adding money, but I don't see money added to.
I did not.
Oh, okay.
I am not, I am not recommending it, because the prior direction of this body was that you wanted to fund certain baseline activities to just get the site looking better. I I think personally, it's worth waiting to see if we actually get anything from the state, from a grant standpoint, but I did feel like it was only fair to bring to your attention that the Parks and Open Spaces Committee has requested that ninety-five thousand dollars be included, additional funding be included in the budget, should the grant application not be approved.
Right.
Okay.
So, no. So I just want to make sure I was understanding.
I I wouldn't say I'm not recommending, or I am recommending, and I think your prior direction was quite clear on this issue, and so I didn't include any additional funding for it.
And to be clear, we do have that one hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and eight available.
Yes.
For Yendel Park work, if we don't get the grant.
For work, we've already planned.
Right.
For, so, so the money that we have, the hundred and twenty-seven thousand, it's essentially already allocated, because that's approximately what it's going to take to demolish it and clean up the site.
Correct.
Ah, okay. So, so.
Any of these additional actions wouldn't yet be able to be covered by what's.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention was just, um, kind of a follow-up to the conversation at the February, late February meeting, is the Waverly Sidewalk Replacement Project. This is a project that I recommend you undertake in FY twenty twenty-four. There is sufficient funding in the capital budget, both in the sidewalk line item, as well as the fact that you're gonna have available highway user fund revenue, so sidewalks, road paving are all eligible uses. Um, I know there are some issues that this group may need to discuss, and I just wanted to suggest that you have whatever discussions are needed.
This is the sidewalk along Waverly?
Yes.
And the light?
Correct.
That we're still in the plastic fence.
Right.
So ugly.
So I would just suggest to you, I don't think you have to do it in April, but I did just want to flag this issue, that I think whatever discussion is needed should take place within the next few months, in my opinion. And that, um, whatever you all decide how to move forward with this project.
Do we need a new design to look at? Do we need somebody to tell us what we can do there, or what do we?
What ended up happening is a couple of things, and and Phil, feel free to jump in here if you'd like. The, some of you may recall, and I think most of you likely do, that the, um, it started with, um, the Arboretum Committee um, had some interest in exploring possibly installing an amphitheater um, in the park, and I think there was also excitement about that idea from the Parks and Open Spaces Committee. The sidewalk, while some of this was happening, and there were a lot of questions just being asked about the sidewalk, it wasn't clear, there were different ideas about the width of the sidewalk, the location of the sidewalk.
Right.
Um, that was all kind of swirling. At that point, um, I asked Mr. Azar to stop doing any design work, because anything he was doing was possibly going to have to be undone, and I kind of make it a practice not to waste governmental money. There have also been some ideas of looking at that area, um, and the mayor may want to jump in. You know, something more than the sidewalk. The sidewalk at where we left it in the design process would not in any way have precluded any eventual installation of an amphitheater. Um, I know that Phil also had sent out some possible lighting options. I don't know to what extent he got any feedback from this group, but everything just kind of stalled out, and that's where we've been for probably, Phil, three to probably six months, maybe?
Yep, yeah, I mean, it discussed, and I think we had settled with the Arboretum Committee that we have a big enough strip to allow
Right.
future plantings or replantings and whatever, and then I had put out a thing, and I can put it back out again, about possibility, you know, suggestions for, uh, lighting along that area, and we had, um, worked with, uh, getting the sidewalk width right, and everybody agreed on the width, and so pretty much we were down to the point of looking at lighting, um, and definitely, I think, trying to at least put in some conduits for lighting, or put in some infrastructure for lighting, and then doing the sidewalk.
Right.
And so we're pretty, we're really pretty close. He just needs to come up with probably some bid drawings um, and update the, uh, putting in the infrastructure for any type of lighting.
Yeah, so what might be helpful, um, I mean, some of, some of the group was more involved. I know the mayor, Phil, Gerald Lee, because of kind of the interplay with, um, Arboretum, saw a lot of the email exchanges. I think I may have forwarded that, but um, I think it would certainly be easy enough. I'm not suggesting you have to do it at your, your April meeting, but you know, perhaps, you know, your May or June meeting, that we just sort of bring everything back in terms of here's where we're at with the width of the sidewalk, the location, Phil could present some of the lighting options.
Why don't we do it in April?
Well, so, so part of the reason that I wanted, part of the reason I wanted this to be on hold is because I sort of after the, our, after the amphitheater idea was sort of coming and going, it 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 occurred to me that that this space is the entrance to our town. This is kind of like the main little entrance and and that it might deserve to be more than just a sidewalk with a couple of lights, and and so I wanted to just sort of put it on hold as long as we've got the leeway in terms of the, the integrity of the sidewalk, that we weren't urgently required to do something right this moment. But yes, I understand that, that we've got to, um, move things ahead. So, but that was, that was my thinking, is that in order to make sure that this project is done in a thoughtful way and not just.
But do you want a different kind of design?
Well, so I, that's, so, like, I, that's kind of why I wanted to just put it on hold, and then I'd like to get back to it. Um, I'm not wanting to do that now. But.
I'm not suggesting you do.
Right, right, right. So, um, so, but yes, I think that, 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 that if if we were to wait and put it out, you know, put it till till May, and, um, and have a couple of months to come up with ideas and incorporate some of the things that were maybe uh, unnecessarily dismissed, or or come up with some new ideas, um, I I think that that we could have a thoughtful discussion, and and maybe we'll stick with exactly what we've already done, or maybe we'll uh, jazz it up a little bit.
Yeah, I just think I, I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead.
I was gonna say a couple of things. I've already heard that the sidewalk is basically starting to fail again, and we're starting to get heaved panels, making it a tripping hazard and a safety hazard. Of course, there's been a number of complaints about the the ever-famous plastic fence. And I'm not so sure how much it's gonna matter putting in, you know, a flat sidewalk, but nevertheless, do you want to bring out the fact that there have been some issues with the sidewalk panels? And part of the land, frankly, you know, actually, probably about two-thirds of it
is parking.
is park and planning lands. There's not a lot we can do with that portion of it.
No, I mean, I think if there's certainly some erosion, um, concerns, I was talking to George Miller about this, I don't know, sometime within the last thirty days. Yeah, and I think certainly the erosion that's on Park and Planning's property is something we can certainly bring to the attention of Park and Planning, and they should be the ones dealing with those erosion issues. So once again, I just wanted to flag it. I don't think this is anything you have to resolve, certainly tonight. That was never my intention, but I think just sometime within, you know, kind of getting into at least early fall, that there be um, some kind of clear direction of what we're doing. So we're giving Jason Azar and his firm several months to basically kind of jump back on the bid documents, do whatever is needed, so that we're in a position to bid this project out in January or February of next year.
I'm just confused, Joanne. When you say you want to jazz it up, or get some other design elements going, I just don't know who the designer is that's gonna give us those options, unless we tell somebody to do it. I mean, I, that's what I'm kind of confused about.
I guess I I'm I'm would like to, uh, step back so that we can consider to the extent that we would want to do something bigger, not necessarily have the plan in place in in May, but to discuss if that is even something that we would want to do.
Well, is it, do we know if it's feasible to do something? I mean, do we know what's, what embellishments are even feasible, or what?
No, that's why I'm wanting to wait a couple of months to find that, to find that out.
But okay, so is somebody gonna do, what I'm trying to understand is what is somebody gonna actually do to be able to tell us where we are in two months, or three, however long you want to.
So, once we've got the budget, um, the budget process, it's taken up a lot of, um, staff time and a lot of my time. Once that is under control, as as it will be in coming days, that's
Right.
that's, this is, this is, uh, something that I will pursue.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, so two questions for that one are, first of all, do we have enough money to even finance what we're talking about now? Um, do we need to put some more money in it? And then secondly, it almost sounds like we're gonna do a design project, which means that we're gonna have to add some more money onto a budget somewhere to accommodate somebody doing some type of design sketch, I don't know, whatever it is that one wants to do.
I I think I can answer the the first part of it. Um, we have a a reasonably um, in the sidewalk line item right now, you've got a hundred and roughly a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The big unknown, um, with the cost estimate that Clark Azar had given me before was lighting, and I think, Phil, as you well know, the the degree of lighting can certainly drive the cost. Um, I would just remind you that you're going to carry over the entirety of the FY twenty twenty-three highway user funds, plus you're gonna be getting additional highway user funds, so I'm not concerned about the funding for the sidewalk project at all. I think you're in good shape on that.
Okay.
Um, with that, um, just wanted to kind of, obviously, the budget ordinance is before you tonight for introduction. Um, whether or not you choose to do so is obviously up to you, assuming that the budget ordinance is introduced tonight. Um, it would be back on your agenda on April tenth for adoption. Um, you don't have to make this decision now, but, um, certainly, I think as your discussion progresses tonight, you can advise me whether or not you feel like you want another budget work session, and I don't, don't think you'll know that until you sort of talk about it and see where everybody's at. So with that, that concludes my remarks, and I'll just turn it over to you, Mayor.
Well, are there any changes? Does anybody, uh, need to have some changes prior to introduction, or?
I have a question.
Gerald, sure.
Barb, I just wanted to get clarification. Again, on the Parks Committee, you noted that they requested five thousand dollars for planning and committee activities, but it wasn't clear to me whether that was placed somewhere in operations, or whether you were looking for direction on establishing a line item.
Probably looking for direction, so there are specific requests, and thank you, Gerald, they don't actually have an account number right now. Certainly, it's easy enough to create one. Um, I think they just wanted a town investment in kind of surveying tools. I think if that's something that the group is interested in, I wouldn't necessarily tie it to Parks and Open Spaces specifically. I don't, I would just say the town should invest in some kind of I wouldn't necessarily tie it to parks and open spaces specifically. I don't, I would just say the town should invest in some kind of. Surveying software. And just have it generally available. I don't think it necessarily specifically has to be tied to parks and open spaces as an allocation.
I would agree with that approach. I know the town has administered surveys before. I'm not sure. Whether we were paying a subscription at that time or.
I'm guessing and I, I don't know what survey specifically, was it Doodle?
Paid for that individually for one time, basically.
Yeah, the free version of Survey Monkey, I would not recommend in terms of just the data compilation. It's a nightmare with the free version. Kayla's also aware of some surveying tools. So I think if this is an area that you're, you know, interested in investing in. I think you can just give us that direction tonight and we can make the necessary adjustments in the budget.
I'm hoping that the website that we're going to use where we've got these prototypes that I saw that are pretty good. I like them, Kayla. I'm hoping that there's would be an add-on to the website that we're buying that would allow us to do surveys and. Ask our residents their opinions about different things and have that be part of the website.
As the contract currently stands for the website. I have not seen any mention or inclusion of a surveying tool. I'm happy to go back and look at the contract to see if there is an option for an add-on. The funding that council committed did include a small contingency, which may or may not be enough to cover. A tool like that, if it is offered. What I will say from looking at the paid version of Survey Monkey and from. Perusing other standalone surveying tools. My initial recommendation. Is that we do the surveying tool as a standalone functionality. That way if we need to loop in committees. We can do that. There's also the matter of the complexity of questions and how we analyze the information. We are going to have more flexibility to make sure that we are truly gathering the information we want and looking at it in a way that makes sense per project. If we do a standalone tool.
Well, why don't we find out what the website offers and then what the capability is and what the cost is. And then we can see if it's integrated. It just would be nice to have people go to one place and be able to do it all in one place is what I'm trying to accomplish.
Right, but if it's not giving us the right, kind of, if it's not allowing us to ask the right kind of questions.
Well, that's why she should find out what's available.
But I would also, if I may, I would also think that if you did have standalone. Connecting it to the website is not an issue.
Let's go with posting a Survey Monkey or similar product link would not be an issue on the website. And I imagine that we likely could easily make a home for it on the front page. Because oftentimes you don't have these surveys running indefinitely. You only want them for a time period. So I'm happy to speak with revise. And see what options are available. Please look for.
And what other, what are their other customers count towns are doing for communicating and polling their residents?
I will look into that. I would say look for an email for that in the next. Week to ten days, depending on how promptly people answer my question.
And just to take into consideration, sorry, Phil. I apologize. Just to take into consideration, any and all surveys will take the time and manpower to. Create and run and analyze. So that should be taken in consideration, considering workload and what. Results we're looking for, what feedback we're looking for from, from.
Well, I'd imagine there's going to be a lot of different surveys that we're going to be interested in in the coming years.
But I'm saying that takes time. It takes more time than more people think.
But it's kind of a way to communicate with our.
No, I'm not saying, I think, I, I completely agree. We just want to make sure that we have enough manpower to do so.
I agree.
I mean, some of that will be done by committees, I would assume, including the data crunching. But there will have to be some, but some manpower, some labor expended to. Get the thing loaded on to the. Up and so forth. So I definitely understand your point. But the question I had was, do we have a survey? I was told once that we had a survey tool in the existing website. Which I don't know if that's true or not.
Councilmember Schulp, I can tell you that if there is such a survey tool, they have hidden it so well in its website. All of my exploration and vain attempts.
On January, July, June twenty-eighth, anyway.
They actually have given me multiple conflicting dates about when our contract has ended. It seems that every individual with Granicus that I speak with has a different date for us. Which is part of why I deeply appreciate council's authorization to proceed with getting started with revise. The goal is. To be ready to go no matter what the drop dead date is. I'm still waiting for Granicus to confirm to me. What's going on since I keep offing dates.
Is there a risk that it would be substantially more than a few days before the end of June?
The dates are only apart by about a week. And we are moving quickly enough with revise that I don't anticipate an issue at this time. That could change depending on what we find out about the survey tool and what we choose to proceed with. The one kind of good thing we have going for us right now is it is fairly early in the process. If we had had this conversation at the April meeting, we would maybe be. Hands forced to go elsewhere. But back to the original question that was asked of me. I've not encountered a survey tool. I am happy to look and see if Granicus has one. But given that we are. Separating from them in only a couple of months, I'm not sure.
It was. No, I understand. It was only a question. I ended up having to use Survey Monkey. I could never find the thing or heard much about it, but I was told at one point it existed. And I thought if there was something there. Then you could look at its functionality for the new stuff, but obviously there's nothing there. So it's not an issue.
So I, I'd like to propose then two changes. One would be to add. An amount, a reasonable amount somewhere that the town staff consider appropriate for a surveying capability. And. The committee had proposed five thousand dollars. I don't, you know, I trust that you will find that. But I would suggest that to keep it simple, I would just take that out of contingency so that we don't have to find a reduction elsewhere in the budget. And then secondly, I'd like to propose that we add in. A rounded up two thousand dollars for the Penn Place Art Project that was proposed earlier this evening for the train exhibit. And, you know, find a suitable place to include that and also take that out of contingency. That would be my proposal.
This is just a, a question for you all. I think there's probably sufficient contingency funds if you wanted to do the. The train installation this fiscal year, if, I don't know. What, how much more work Mr. Almy feels he needs to do, but is that something you'd like us to follow up with him? Does, would you like to try to fund it out of this?
Well, that's a good point. We may be able to complete it under this year's budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that way it would be.
It goes into effect. Jan, July first, right?
I was, I was thinking May in my head, so.
And, and, and the expenditure would be the train and tracks. So I mean, it's not. It wouldn't, it wouldn't even, even if he didn't finish the, the installation or anything like that.
It's just the equipment.
And I do like the idea of seeing if there's somebody in town who, you know, if there, if there is a train out there that. That would, that somebody would be willing to donate for this purpose. But.
For loan.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I know Archives and Lisa's probably going to touch on this in her report, but. You know, they're planning something here at Town Hall to celebrate the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. I just thought if it works from a timing standpoint. It might be nice to start that celebration a little sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I have the timing off. Okay, I think that's a good suggestion.
Was there? Anything else that we wanted to adjust in the. Proposed ordinance or the introduced, the ordinance so that we could introduce it? Anything we need to change before we introduce, introduce it? If not, can I get a motion to introduce? This ordinance?
I'll make a motion, make a motion that we introduce the, this ordinance, the Town of Garrett Park FY. Twenty twenty-four capital operating and ARPA budgets ordinance, looks like it's going to be twenty twenty-three dash two.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ooh, lots of seconds. You let Lisa have it. All right, the time is nine eleven and we are going to move on to the next item. Oh, we've got to take a vote. Okay. All those in favor of introducing the, the FY twenty twenty-four budget, who was in favor? Any opposed? Okay, there are four members present, all four in favor. Next item on the list is the contract award for the composting pilot program. Assistant Town Manager Uker, if you could take the lead on that.
I am happy to do so to give Barb a chance to drink some water and. Press up. It's a fairly short memo, but I will still kind of recap it. We did put out the request for proposals earlier this calendar year. It was out before the end of January with a mid-February deadline. I did at the request of Councilmember Bennett, make sure to notify several composting. Entities in the region of this opportunity and make sure that they knew where to find it if they are interested in turning a bid. Unfortunately, the town only received one bid. It was received from Compost Crew. They offer a seven gallon and a twelve gallon size composting container. The fourth paragraph kind of has the breakdown.
Do you know what the fee is for the smaller container?
The fee for the smaller container is a twenty-two dollar monthly fee and a twenty dollar cost for the actual bin. The twelve gallon is. Costs thirty-five dollars for the actual bin and twenty-six dollars for the monthly service charge. Using those numbers and some math, I sent out a couple of options to. Mayor Welch and Councilmember Bennett about potential ways to structure this program. Before I go into what's recommended, Councilmember Paskowski did provide some comments in the chat box before he headed out. He had actually wanted to see a fifty percent support. Really quick with Town Manager Matthews, it was for the seven gallon that he wished to see. He had no desire to see the larger size. Is that correct?
I wanted to ask a question.
Councilmember Max, you had a question?
So there's twenty-nine people in town using the service now. So would those twenty-nine people be part of this? Fee to subsidize their already participation?
The direction from this body was that we would be open to including and onboarding. People who already had the existing service. So.
Right, it doesn't seem fair to penalize people who were already.
Right, and how are we going to get people to sign up for it?
So the sign up has not yet been determined in part because I wanted to make sure that council was comfortable with the level of. Subsidy and support that was being recommended. The recommendation in the memo that went out to all of you and that was made available to community members. Basically said the town would only subsidize seventy-five percent of the bill for the smaller container. The expectation would be, and I'm going to pick on Councilmember Bennett. Thank you. If Geraldie chooses to do this program and she wants the twelve gallon container. The expectation will be that she will pay the balance.
Difference.
Yes, whether that be the. What have you.
And then how does the, how would the billing work on that? I hope you didn't discuss that in my absence. I apologize. Okay, so how it's so.
So. That's kind of one of the areas where we have not had detailed discussions about how we wish to approach it. And in part, that's why sign up materials have not yet been. Shared as drafts with you all. If the intention is to have the community members pay directly to Compost Crew for the balance. Obviously, I will contact Compost Crew and confirm who the appropriate contact is and how they wish to process those payments. If there's any special note that needs to be made. In kind of the memo box on a check or on an online payment. If town council would prefer to, let's say, have. The resident contribution collected upfront as a once a year. One and done. So we make sure everyone gets paid on time. That is an option that could be explored.
That probably wouldn't be a great idea. It's just a lot of money for people to come up with for, to pay for something a whole year that they're only being charged monthly.
Yeah, so I will say, using the seven gallon example, if the town is paying seventy-five percent. I believe that works out to sixteen dollars and change being paid by the town. My apologies at this hour of the night, my math skills are not great. So it'd be five fifty per month that the resident.
Sixty bucks a year.
If I remember right, I was trying to pull up the, the bid document. If I remember right, it sounded like. The way I read the bid document, it seemed like it, their normal routine with other towns that they work with is where. They would work directly with the resident, which I would find beneficial to the town to keep our administrative work.
That would be my preference. As previously noticed in this meeting, we are a small staff. As much as I am excited about this compost pilot. I kind of want to turn it over to the professionals and let them administer.
And there was no extra fee for that.
There was no extra fee. There was no price differential. If we chose to do a seventy-five percent subsidy or a one hundred percent subsidy, so. Kind of the question I have for council. Is it your preference that it be a seventy-five percent subsidy? Would you prefer to move as Councilmember Paskowski suggested to a fifty percent? Subsidy to open it up to more residents?
Might I make an alternative to Councilmember? Paskowski's recommendation, if the concern is that we wouldn't have enough funding to get through a full year. For more residents, I would recommend that we revisit the budget at the mid. Year adjustment. The fifteen thousand should be enough to. Provide for as many residences sign up. Once we advertise it to get us through to the mid, mid-year adjustment and we could increase the budget for this line item if we have. More interest than the current budget would allow.
I do want to kind of take a moment to note on a broader level. When Town Manager Matthews and I spoke with other municipalities in the region that have similar programs. One of the questions they were asked is what's your level of participation and engagement? The numbers were low. I currently don't anticipate us having funding issues. During this pilot. Because quite frankly. Even if we keep out the seventy-five percent subsidy, that is seventy-five households and that is. Maybe a generous overestimation of how many households I would expect to actually engage in the program. I know we would all love to believe. That our neighbors would make time for. Composting, but people don't always, I want to say the high participation rate was. Forty percent, and I think that was an outlier. I think the rest didn't even scratch thirty percent of the community. Obviously, this is a pilot. Kind of what we would hope to see is such a high level of engagement that we go. Take that information and use it to. Fund appropriately for the level of. Engagement that we have.
Do we want to take it for granted that? We would. Allow the active households. To participate in the, in the. In the pilot?
That's what we just said, I thought, right?
Yeah, it's in the bid documents that we would allow the active households.
I thought it was yet to be determined, okay.
No, it was in there that we would permit it.
Already doing it.
It would seem unfair to penalize people who are already composting.
Geraldie, how do you feel about fifty percent? Do you think that would impact the people participating? Cause you're planning. If I understand this, you're planning as a pilot, you're not planning the town to subsidize at this level forever going forward, are you?
Well, I see it as a pilot to gauge interest by residents. I do think the less you subsidize, you are going to get fewer participants and then we are subsidizing then fewer and fewer. I'd like to encourage more people to participate. I think there are general benefits to the town by keeping organic waste out of. The, the regular waste stream and preventing it from going into landfills. So. I think it's to the town's benefit to encourage more people to participate in composting.
But do you think if, if, if people, if we get seventy-five or a hundred people to do it, forty percent of three hundred people, what, you know, hundred and fifty people. Do you think we would continue to subsidize this in five years to? Keep doing it? Or do you think this is an idea to get people to sign up and use it and then stop the subsidy? I'm just wondering what your thought is.
Well, my vision is that we would continue to subsidize it. I think it's unrealistic to think that we would start with a subsidy and then take it back. If, if, if it's our, if it's our collective vision, I mean, my vision is not necessarily your vision, right? My vision is that we would continue to subsidize, but it. But i- if, if the rest of the council has a different vision, I would start at a lower subsidy if, because I think it's much harder to claw back
Right.
Something you give than to give it, well, than to start low, add to it later if you feel like it hasn't been enough.
Well, if twenty-nine people are already doing it with no subsidy, you know, I think you're not talking about a lot of money, but I would like to support this and I think we should see if we can get people to sign up and do it. I think we should subsidize it.
Would seventy-five percent however be, if you will, an too much of an incentive? Not in the negative sense, because I totally support composting. I do it myself. But will be, will people be signing up just to, just in case, because six fifty is not a big deal for them in a, you know, in a month? If you will. Well, that's something. And I am concerned with the fact that you're, that we would be subsidizing this ad infinitum.
So, so in terms of actual usage, if, if we signed up seventy-five households, Compost Crew would be able to tell us, hey, there are only pickups for thirty of these households. And even just informally driving around, we can see on, on a, on a Monday afternoon or Monday morning, you know, how many bins are out and, and, and being collected. So
Mayor Welch.
That would be something that we could determine.
Yeah. I did a little quick math. If we were to drop it to a fifty percent subsidy, that would allow the town to support one hundred and thirteen households in using the seven gallon bins. That is closer to the one fifty approximation that Councilmember Max identified as our high watermark of forty percent. If that's something that you wish to pursue, obviously, that's an additional thirty-eight potential households that could be involved versus a seventy-five percent subsidy. If you want me to pull up the email that has the math about what we would be looking at for one hundred percent subsidy, I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure you are aware of the different household numbers that could be supported at various levels.
Kayla, do you think that it will make a difference whether it's seventy-five percent subsidy versus fifty percent? Or could we send out the feelers, say, who wants to sign up? Anybody who wants to sign up will join or, or, or something where that, where it's not necessarily known that there's only seventy-five slots. But, you know, I mean, if only forty people sign up, well, then we're, you know, stick with the seventy-five percent and if, if if three hundred, if three hundred people, if three hundred households say, yes, let's do it, you know, then we can have a different discussion. But do we, I, I mean, I don't think raising it, having a hundred and twenty
Hundred and thirteen.
Hundred and thirteen slots. If it's not going to make a difference to people, whether it's fifty percent or seventy-five percent, I mean, either they want to do it or they don't, I guess. And so I, I think if, if, if we were to say seventy-five percent and then a hundred and twelve people decide they want to sign up, then that's a great problem to have.
Right.
And we could then have a different discussion.
And we could vary the amount of the subsidy. We could vary the amount of the subsidy in years going forward too, depending on participation.
We could.
Right. Sorry.
I was gonna ask, are we capping it for sure? Or because I'm, I'm kind of getting the feeling that we would take whoever wanted to join at whatever subsidy we were looking at. I mean, am I wrong? Is it gonna be capped at seventy-five for sure? Or are we gonna just, if?
I think it was just we'd initially said fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
I mean.
Right, we would have to revisit the budget and add money if we wanted to go above that cap, if we had more people sign up.
But again, good problem.
We'd have to put people on a waiting list until we up the budget.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification from the bigger picture side, seeing as this is a a test, if you will, what is the, what is the criteria that we're following? I mean, are we looking for X number of households that need to join for us to continue this or why is my question? Why, why the study?
To be fair, I think we use the term pilot just to try it out and see if we got enough interest to continue doing it. If we have, we know we have twenty-nine residents who work with Compost Crew. There are a number of residents who actually work with other companies in town, not a lot, but a few. If we see that we don't get interest above the current numbers who are already paying a hundred percent, I think that would give us an idea that this is something that perhaps residents are not as interested in as we thought when we did the survey. We did do a survey a couple of years ago and the numbers were I, I don't have them at my fingertips, to be honest, but they were pretty high in terms of at least survey interest and participating.
Right, right.
But it is different actually putting out the money to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So my question, thank you for answering it. What, what criteria will we be using in order to decide whether the pilot continues or stops or what have you, or modifies or?
Right, and for me, it's, it's simply getting more people in town, a reasonably a reasonable number more people in town to participate to make it worth our effort to administer a program.
I understand.
So what would that, because right now, I mean, it seems like you'd almost be guaranteed twenty-nine plus some number that's on.
Right, but if you look at your twenty-nine as your baseline, if we got ten more people to compost, is, is that, is that worthwhile? I think that's really kind of up to the council to decide.
It would be, I, I think it, it's a good idea, composting, don't get me wrong, but I'm just wondering, it would be, the subsidy would be the, the thing is how do we, how do we deal with it in the out years? And the other question I had, which is more for Barb, I'll have to is, do you think there's any chance since we're composting that we may be able to get a slight reduction in our trash pickup that we could then use as a savings store as a comp?
But we're not going to be able to reduce their efforts. I mean, it's a very small landfill size amount that you're, they're still going to make the same number of trash pickups.
Right, unless we were to do something radical like drop down to one trash pickup a week.
Right, and the survey definitely indicated that that was not hugely popular.
But there's a tipping charge involved is usually what it amounts to is it's, you know, the tipping charges is typically what gets you and so we might affect the tipping charge, I don't know.
Um, you know, I, I would just say at this time we're under a contract, so the contract expires September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. So there's really no provision under, you know, the current contract mechanism to force that. The existing hauler contract also has the possibility of subsequent extensions. I think this is probably more in my opinion, a, a question looking forward, once we have some history from the composting program and perhaps we rebut out trash service and we can say, hey, we have this many people now participating in composting and this is how much it's diverted. But I think it, I don't, I wouldn't go into this expecting any savings initially through the trash contract.
I didn't figure that it was gonna be for this one. I just figured that, you know, in the out years, can we basically say, hey?
Yeah, I think it's certainly information we could include in the bid documents the next time we get out the service, could see what happens. Do the trash haulers currently collect or provide any data about our tipping weights? We actually, so there's two sets of tipping fees. The tipping fees for the basic trash service, this is a little bit unusual in my opinion, but they actually rolled it into their base rates. A lot of haulers would not do that cause they'd be hedging their bets of what's gonna happen. So we have no tipping fees just for kind of basic trash service. The only area where we pay tipping fees, which was specifically outlined in their bid, was for the large item pickup. So we don't even really, I mean, they would have data for trash hauling and tipping fees, but it's not something we pay directly that we have any information on. I'm sure they do, however.
So, I mean, as of now, the only, the, the questions Kayla are at what level? And and we've already allocated fifteen thousand dollars in the current year budget, so that's already there. I mean, it seems to me that we could potentially know how many people want to sign up prior to adoption of the next of, of next year's budget. And so if this is wildly popular, we can revisit that as part of our discussions for next years. But, you know, the fifteen thousand will surely get us through the end of June. So I, I, I don't want us to be slowed down that, to the point that we're not proceeding with this. It is, to some extent, we kind of have to say, if you sign up, this is gonna be for subsidies subsidized thing and we will discuss at a later date to, you know, what extent it's going to continue to be subsidized if it is. But
Yeah, I mean, I'm an advocate for the seventy-five percent subsidy, but if the majority of the council wants to start with a fifty percent, I'm certainly fine with going along with that. So I'm okay with either. I advocate for the seventy-five.
I would go with the seventy-five also.
I would support the fifty.
I'd support fifty.
And I think Steve had already indicated.
He indicated the fifty, so.
Seems generous to me.
So fifty percent of the seven gallon, that would support a maximum of one hundred and thirteen households. Please keep an eye out in your inbox in the coming days and weeks for signup material to review before it goes out to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help and support. I know I bombarded you with emails about weird.
You did a great job, Kayla. Thank you so much for managing this.
Thank you very much. Time is nine thirty-two and we're gonna move on to unfinished business. Can I, I, I don't know if I have, if this is okay with you guys, but I kind of want to do something simple next, if that's okay? That being the grotto property, can we do the grotto property real quick, like bump that up? Because I just feel like this is a simple, easy, let's not that it's a done deal or anything, but just that it's.
And I'm hoping you didn't curse this discussion, Mayor.
Did I, oh, oh.
So I think everyone is aware that in last spring, the town was approached by Rob Pratt about his family's interest in donating the property. I'm located on Argyle that we all commonly refer to as a grotto property. In the interest of time, I think I'll just simply say that everyone is aware that this property has played an important role in the town's history and I included in the agenda packet some information that was provided to me by our town archivist. So kind of where we are today is, we're, I think the Pratt family is eager to move forward with this. One of the issues that we need direction on is the extent of the property that we will accept for donation. The Pratt's family's interest is in donating the entirety of the parcel. I think in part, they'd like to see it preserved as it exists today. Also, if we, if they only donate part of the property, they would have to go through the subdivision process, which is obviously lengthy. So that's question number one, which is, are you all prepared to accept the entirety of the parcel? Which obviously, the more property, the more maintenance potentially, or do you want us to pursue only accepting the donation that contains the grotto itself?
Now, to be clear, the, the, the Prats have asked that it not be developed. And so there, the maintenance would merely be keeping it safe and.
So I think that's, that's one issue. I think once we get through that, I did talk to Ron Bolts. We've had, I've had some back and forth with Rob Pratt about does the family have a survey? What type of legal description do they have for the property? So they have provided some documentation. They have a deed for the property. The town attorney has recommended that we retain a title attorney to actually prepare the property donation deed for whatever section of the property we're talking about. Obtain title insurance for the town and perform the property closing. So once, as I mentioned, I do have a copy of a property deed that was provided to me by the Pratt family. Assuming you're okay with retaining a title attorney, I will share that information with the title attorney and see if that's sufficient or if a survey is needed.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
When I looked at the property, it looked like the part of the grotto property was a triangle and then it was another piece that went over to the other street behind it, I guess. It's like, it's a funny, it's like a V or.
Yeah, what shows up on the Montgomery County maps
Right.
looks to be just sort of a long skinny piece. When I look at it standing from the street, I would think it's almost sort of like an L.
Right.
So that could just be an issue with the county mapping, but I can certainly confirm that with Rob Pratt.
I'm just wondering if the, not the grotto part, if that's the the, the you know, one piece, but the L part, you know, the other piece, if that would be a buildable lot.
That this purchase, them handing this to us is us saying, no, we will not turn it into, we will not allow it to be a buildable lot. I'm not quite sure that the L portion you mean. My, my understanding from having walked it with Rob was that it was just long skinny.
One long skinny piece that runs behind the houses, as best as I can tell from looking at the property maps. The exact boundaries, because we don't have a survey, I just have a, a deed, which obviously has a lot of legal description. You know, I think certainly the family, as Mayor indicated, wants to see the property preserved as they have owned it all these years. And going through these, you know, the subdivision and plating process is a lengthy process and has costs associated with it. But I think their overarching interest in just is having the property preserved heavily treated as it exists today. So I, I guess, you know, is there a sentiment in terms of what, whether the town will accept the entirety of the parcel as the Pratt family has requested? I have a question. It, it appears to me that in the documents you've given us, there's no depiction of the difference between the two. There isn't. You know, I think everyone is aware where the grotto is, so there is considerable property beyond where the grotto itself exists, because it's obviously very close to the street. It, it's without a survey that's showing acreage or anything. It's a little hard to tell. I think if we were only to accept the property that had the, the grotto itself, I, I think arguably we could go back to the Prats and I'm not suggesting we do so, but we'll take up to here.
Right.
You know, they've been very clear that their interest is in donating everything. So I think if you all are not so inclined, then it's a matter of my going back to Rob Pratt and figuring out.
What I walked with Jack is it didn't look like one contiguous site. It looked like a L, you know, like it went up and then it went another piece, went another way.
That might just be that neighbors are maintaining beyond their property lines.
But essentially, it's like, it looks like a continuation of.
Can we pay, can we pay to have a survey done so we get an exact idea of what we're taking on and?
Well, so the essence is that it's either just the grotto where that pavilion-y area is or that plus
The whole thing.
Uh, you know, like a three or four times that much.
Yeah, there's not. Can you give me a minute? I had called, when Rob and I were exchanging emails. The property can't be all that big because the assessed land value is roughly as of July first of two thousand and twenty-three was only fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. If this was obviously a buildable lot in Garrett Park, it would be assessed a whole lot higher. The entire property and land area is ten thousand, five hundred and sixteen square feet.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Oh, wow.
That's a quarter acre.
That's bigger than my, yeah, bigger than my lot. Do we have puppies of current or more up-to-date lots? Would, wouldn't that show?
Well, we, we certainly have the S stat description and can, I can pull that up. Showing the lot, it does.
So what's, what's the difference? Like, what's the concern? I mean, I, I understand from a maintenance perspective that we'd want kind of the minimal amount. But if we're talking about it being natural unmanicured
Right.
And it would be a couple of cleanups a year.
And just open space.
And just open space, although I will point out that every couple of decades, they've put in a, they've, they've revamped a badminton court. That should go in the bugle. A badminton court, up the upper, the flat side, the flat portion up there. But so I, I want to get a sense of what's the concern about accepting, I mean, either we get nothing or we get the whole thing. I guess that's kind of what they're offering.
A risk, right, that they would not break it up.
Correct, correct. But, you know, I mean, if it's gonna be just a couple of cleanups a year, I mean, it's not nothing, but like, what's the concern about having?
Wouldn't we have to get insurance on it too?
We would. We, once we assumed ownership of the property, we would update our property inventory with the local government insurance trust and they would just add it to the roster. I mean, there's it's, it's basically with the exception of the grotto structure, it's raw land, so.
Pretty minimal.
Pretty minimal. Yeah, the difference between the two sizes would be very minimal.
So I'm, so for clarification, please. Are we discussing whether to accept just that one little front part or all of it?
That is, that is one of the questions, though. I had reached out to the Pratt family some time ago and Rob's been our primary point of contact, asking whether when we were first approached, did they want, were they proposing to donate just the portion containing the grotto? Or was the family's interest in donating everything? And the answer was they would like to donate the entire parcel. Obviously, what you all are willing to accept from a donation standpoint is your, your decision to make. Um, I, the family's eager to move forward. I had told Rob that I would put it on the agenda this evening for a decision.
Yeah, so answer to the mayor's question or somebody's question about what, what we're worried about, sorry. If, if it belongs to Garrett Park, I would hope that it could be used by Garrett Parkers in one way or another. So having it surveyed, actually, I think both for us and for future generations will be very important. Um, and I would strongly recommend that and support that.
Oh, absolutely. Just, I'm just wondering if it needs to be done in advance of making a decision.
Uh, that I don't know, but um, I would definitely recommend it at least quite immediately after. Um, just to ensure that so that there's no pickups or lost information or what have you, which we all know tends to happen.
And can we get whatever restrictions there are or would be put on this? Because it would sound like it would be nice to be able to, uh, have something where we might be able to put up another badminton court or something like that if we wanted to. Or, yeah, and the worst benches, I mean, some minimal improvements of some variety, not necessarily a pavilion or something, but, um.
The Yendo property, we're talking about putting a fence around it so we don't have people walking through other people's backyards contiguous. And then would we wanna put any lighting or paths or, you know, other kind of.
Right.
Quiet, you know.
I mean, it's a very lovely spot and a wonderful historic place if you wanted this, just to check it out. So what is that? What does that mean? And what, how big is it? What if the future, I mean, and let's face it, the, um, value of land is not going down.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly be, I would encourage you all to be just cognizant of the residences that are there. So if we're starting to put lights or something like that, I do think there might be some pushback. Um, you know, the cost of a survey is probably in the seven to eight thousand dollar range. Um, my intention, depending on what your direction you give tonight, is to share a copy of the deed um, with the title attorney I'm proposing that we hire and Ron has given me a name. You know, to see if that's at least sufficient to move forward with the drafting. I think whether or not you want to survey for some other reason other than just preparing the donation deed is a different question. If you do decide to move forward and you want a survey done, we probably need to rejigger some numbers in the budget, um, you know, just to cover the cost of the survey.
I mean, I would think it'd be wise just for purposes of knowing exactly what we're getting to.
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that when I turn over a deed and we're trying to get title insurance, if that's going to be sufficient, I, I have my doubts about that. Um, I'm, I'm glad that the survey question came up and that it's something that if the title attorney, you know, says, no, this isn't sufficient. You need to get a survey.
I mean.
Yeah, I think, I really encourage it. I think clarifying the restrictions and getting a survey would be really prudent before we accept the property. So we know what we're getting and where it is.
And if I can, when we talk about clarifying the restrictions, are we asking if the family has any restrictions?
Well, they said they don't wanna develop it. They want it to stay.
I can, yeah.
Natural, so the question is.
Do they want some kind of conservation easement or something else?
Right, I mean, right.
Right, and that's a question I have. The Yandel property involves the Garrett Park Land Trust. Is there a proposal that this transfer also involves the land trust or is, is that not part of the mix?
It, it's, it's not been part of the mix and, and certainly with what I'm about to say, I, I offer no disrespect to the land trust. Um, I think just as we're kind of going about and trying to do tree maintenance and things, um, having the conservation trust ads, I, I don't know the history with Yandel, um, how that all came to be. Um, it's been a little, I think we're, we're at a good place now, but it's been one of the complications I've been trying to navigate with the, the Yandel House demolition RFP. Um, but it's kind of become a chicken and the egg thing in terms of, I'm trying to write standards to protect trees. Um, I think with Phil Normandy's help, we've now worked out where we're at and there's an agreement between the trust and the town in terms of what trees must remain. I, I, unless there's a, a specific reason to have a, another entity involved, I think it would just be simpler.
Agreed.
Um, and like I said, I don't mean any disrespect in saying that. Um, and my guess is, and once again, as Donna was saying earlier, I'm not an attorney either and I don't try to practice law without a license. But I would imagine there may be a way to, um, to, to write some type of restrictions into the donation deed itself. Um, you know, I, I can certainly talk to the title attorney about that.
Well, it's not so much that it, that they write them in is that if they're going to write them in, because with Yandel there was. But for instance, if they don't write them in, that's totally different. Um, but if they're going to write them in, it would be nice to know what those are.
I can go back to Rob and just ask him. I mean, I, I think, and Joanna, you've been part of those discussions as well. I think clearly the family's expectation is that it, it will be, they want the property to be enjoyed by someone. They'd like it to remain. I mean, this is about as detailed as it's gotten, um, in somewhat of a natural state. Um, they speak very fondly of sort of their, their kind of informal badminton court and just people enjoying the space. Uh, but they haven't said anything more specific than that. Um, but I can certainly talk to Rob about that and, and, and bring this back at the next meeting with an update.
So is the request that we do a survey in advance of deciding whether to accept this?
No, I don't, well, that's not what I'm.
I mean, I thought that's.
What I, what I'm hearing is that these are things we would want to do as part of the process of accepting. I'm comfortable saying tonight that I'm comfortable with us accepting the full property and not asking for it to be subdivided.
Or survey.
Well, I, I recommend it be surveyed during the transition process. I don't think it has to be done before we communicate that we are willing to accept the full property.
I agree, Charlie.
I agree too.
Um, so it sounds like everyone's comfortable with accepting the entirety of the property. Um, I'm kind of assuming it's okay for me to talk to a title attorney to hire someone because that's what Rumbold himself has recommended.
Really ten thousand square feet.
Well, see, that's why I would like to get at least a map out of the deal, something to. Before we accept.
Yeah, I can. That was supposed to, that was supposed to show you the historical. I will send you the, um, the link to the, the county, the county map that shows the parcel. Um, this was, yeah, that was not suggesting that that's what you should look at today. Um, you know, I.
Do we have a right of way survey too? We might have a piece of it, right?
I, I'll have, George, George really knows how to work with those maps, so I'll ask him to pull that out when I see him in the morning. Um, you know, I think a title attorney, I don't have a good sense, but just from, you know, handling a closing and kind of what attorneys typically charge. I'd say we're probably looking at roughly, you know, four to five K for hiring a title attorney. But they certainly, you know, real estate is a specialized area of law, which I think is why Ron is suggesting we hire someone.
I've done a lot of work with Paragon Title. They might get, be able to give you a good price.
So it sounds like the, the, the expenses, if we were to accept this, the expenses we, we would be incurring would be four to five thousand for the title attorney, seven to eight thousand for a survey. And then, um, the arborist, uh, looking at about four thousand there, so less than twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
And then isn't it ten dollars? Don't we have to pay ten dollars for the property?
Usually you have to either pay a dollar or ten dollars or some nominal exchange of money. Um, you know.
Do you want our arborist to take a look at the trees and see if any of them have to come down?
I, I, I had them, Phil Norman D is currently out of town. I did ask him if, um, you know, we had looked at the property just to do some cleanup before the appreciation ceremony back in December. Um, he will be returning soon and I, you know, asked him if he could walk the property to get a sense of. Cause obviously if there's large trees that are disrepair, that's expensive, um, and you all should know about that. Um, I should be able to tell you fairly quickly when I send the deed to the attorney, the name is Mr. Brumberg, um, whether or not he feels that's sufficient. Um, if a survey ends up being needed just to actually move towards closing, um, as you all feel certainly aware of this, cause he's worked with me on a lot of projects where surveys have been involved. Um, they, the way things are running right now, it's gonna take a good, um, six to ten weeks to get a survey done. Um, so we'll just kind of see whether or not a survey is needed just for our own informational purposes or, or actually is needed to actually draft anything. So I should be able to tell you that fairly quickly.
And restrictions, whatever restrictions they're gonna wanna write into this, so we know what we're getting.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Rob Pratt, um, and just ask him, you know, kind of what the family has in mind, if anything.
So do we want to allocate the funds for this?
Um, what I have assumed, um, you know, just for, in, in calculating the carryover amount from FY twenty twenty-three, not to be presumptuous, but I already assumed that we would be hiring a title attorney in terms of what we would probably be spending this year for professional fees. I have not, um, included anything in the budget for a survey. Um, so I would need to make some adjustment to the numbers and bring that back to you as an amendment. I did include funding in FY twenty twenty-four just for sort of a, kind of a basic cleanup of, of the property. Um, you know, once, um, Mr. Norman D is back, I can have him check to see if I need to adjust that four thousand dollar figure. But I did include something in the twenty twenty-four budget to do a cleanup of the property.
So is there, is everybody in favor of, of accepting this property? Knowing that it's gonna cost us about twenty thousand dollars in this first calendar year-ish?
Not until we figure out what the, the, I would like to know, personally, I, I will vote against it only from the aspect that I would like to know what the restrictions are, you know, just to make sure that we understand what we're getting into, that's all.
Um, would you all, um, and I could do a couple of things. I mean, obviously the first thing I would do tomorrow morning is reach out to Rob Pratt and see if I can just kind of initiate a call to, or an email exchange to talk about the restrictions. Would you like this back on your April agenda, just to sort of tie up the loose ends and?
Yeah, because I, I'm sorry, cause I thought the question on the table was whether we would signal that we were, we're willing to accept the whole of the property versus the smaller part.
One of the questions.
Those other, yeah.
Oh, I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I do think we need some of these other things before we officially vote to accept property.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Done. All right, so we're gonna bring this back next month with some more information. Okay, um, next item on the agenda, um, Penn Place security cameras. Kayla, did you, uh, have some, uh, additional information that you wanted to share with us?
So you have with your meeting packet, a memo that was sent out, which included some updated information about the conversation Town Manager Matthews and I had with both Mark and MTA staff regarding um, the train station. They were open to hearing this out, but they were pretty clear at every turn that it is not likely that we would be granted a right of entry to install cameras to monitor the station itself.
Did you show them the pictures of the Slastikas?
We did not show them pictures of the vandalism, but we did. Yes, yeah. Part of it was we were meeting on site and as demonstrated by the recent technical difficulty, it's not always the easiest to take technology out into the wild. Circling back to the broader issue of the Penn Place cameras. When this project was initially brought up, the scope that it was brought up with was to cover the gaps at Penn Place. Over the course of several months, the conversation has changed and evolved. So kind of questions in order and there are follow-up questions. Before we kick it over to Councilmember Shulp, who had sent out some information shortly before the meeting regarding some visualizations he did. Question one, is the scope of this project still the original scope? That was focused solely on hardening the security of Penn Place? That had twelve thousand, five hundred dollars allocated to cover four exterior and two interior cameras. If the answer to that question is no, my next question to council is, what is the scope of work that you would like to see this project become? And what funding would be available to achieve this? As noted at a prior meeting, to add two additional cameras that would focus solely on license plate quality photos to the Penn Place building, we'd be looking at an extra two thousand, five hundred. In the memo, under the section right of entry at the Mark station, if this project is expanded to include coverage of the station, which is where the majority of vandalism has occurred. Um, I do wanna highlight that we would be responsible for establishing our own electrical box. I don't have an estimated cost for that. Um, Town Manager Matthews and I started guestimating numbers. I feel confident in saying we'd probably be looking at a minimum of another fifteen thousand dollars if we choose to add an electrical box and add cameras specifically at the security.
Where would the electricity come from?
You could use solar. There's one thing I was gonna tell you is that there are solar cameras out there. And the good news is if you were to mount it on a pole, you could use the, the solar maybe be able to be powered by the streetlight itself. But I think that the one thing that got me, and I guess this is where I would say maybe we, we have to look at is the last bullet on the second page or the, the first bullet on the second page, which is the last bullet of the series.
Formatting is a challenge.
I understand. And they, and they make a good, this is a, a very good point, and to the point where I would say that I would, I would consider dropping it. Because, I mean, in short, what it says is that it's not going to deter the vandalism and they have been able to catch people, however, they usually go free. So it becomes, what was the sense?
I had this exact same point. Why are we bothering to do this?
So.
You know, what's, I mean, it.
I would agree that it's probably worth dropping it, to be honest with you.
What, the whole, the whole idea of cameras or?
No, just the camera at, at the Mark station.
So, so get back, so, so maybe, okay, so is the sense that we wanna go back to the original scope? Which is just to just monitor.
Yes.
Penn Place?
Yes, okay. I have a follow-up question for council. The original scope, as previously mentioned, had four exterior cameras and two interior cameras. I am going to ask Town Manager Matthews if she could pull up the document that Councilmember Shulp sent out before the meeting. If I am understanding your document correctly, and please jump in if I am misunderstanding it, I only got a brief look at this before the meeting started.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
Do you want the interior or?
Exterior first, because the interior, I, I, I'll explain that in a minute. I'll just bring up the exterior because it's easier to. Yes, okay.
So, yeah.
I'll just quick, uh, so this is a quick overview. So, long story short, what we're looking at here is just a quick sketch of Penn Place. The surrounding area, the green stuff is vegetation, of course. The yellow stuff is going to be what I believe to be the sidewalk area. The black stuff is the driveway. So I looked at cameras and each one of these triangles represents the view of a typical camera that you would see. And what I'm trying to illustrate here is that depending on where you place the cameras, you could use as many as, say, eight or nine of them to cover the entire exterior. Otherwise, if you wanted to get down to just a handful of cameras, I would suggest the ones that are in orange versus the ones that are in purple. And that is because, and you might even be able to get away with C one, but for just, I arbitrarily assigned numbers to them just so we could talk. Um, but C one, which looks basically on the entryway coming into the post office. C three would cover the entryway coming into Penn Place from the upper level and to some extent cover what's, um, you know, sort of near the porch. C five and C seven would cover the side of the, uh, building. And C eight would, would look out towards the garage. S one was just a, consider it an extra if you wanted to look the other way. My point here was to show that there is that we would need multiple cameras and possibly multiple locations, because they can't see around corners and you're gonna be trapped as to what you can see. So we need to look at our views, you know, one of the big things is to look at the views and, and understand um, what these cameras are looking at and are they covering everything everybody wants to, uh, see? To me personally, I would say that the orange ones would be, and that would include an additional camera. Or I suppose you could get rid of C seven, but would, those would be what I would think to be placements that it would allow us to cover entryways plus, um, basically give almost a three sixty around the building.
And would that also include the garage in the back?
Yeah, so C eight is the ones looking at the garage.
Okay.
Or you could have S one, which is the garage looking out.
Right.
C eight would be my recommendation to look towards the garage.
Right.
But that's, and these are all based, the width that you see of the triangle is based on the, uh, width of a camera. And then the depth of the triangle or that line that you see running through the middle of it, that indicates twenty-five feet, which is about where you, um, your, uh, um, resolutions begins to fall off. And the dotted lines, of course, are the train tracks. And it's, this is all roughly to scale based on my sketch, using an overhead picture from Google. But it's also a way of just, if people wanna look at it and get an idea as to what you might want, it gives you an idea as to how the thing is.
What you'd be able to see.
What you'd be able to see and how basically things will be in shadow, so you might actually have to have several cameras depending on how good of a view around the building you wanna get.
Well, so let's ask this question. I mean, the first question is, do we want the scope to be the same? To go, do we wanna go back to the original? do we want the scope to be the same to go, do we want to go back to the original scope, which was which was four cameras?
Four exterior cameras, two interior, I do want to.
But.
And, and hold on, we'll get that. But, um, on a quick, someone mentioned, I don't even remember who anymore. That if we put some, if we put cameras outside, there might be some historic work, historic area work permit kind of requirement.
So I did reach out to my contact at county HPC. They understand the need. Um, they would like us to try and place cameras in a way that is discreet, but they indicated that they would approve whatever placement we had determined was going to best ensure the security of the building. So kind of the question where we're at is if council prefers the scope that's covered by councilmember Schultz's diagram. I would like the formal direction to proceed with that, and I would like council to allocate. I was doing some quick math as you all were discussing some of the camera angles. Based on what had previously been told to me by the vendor, I would estimate we would probably need another 6,000 to cover the additional cameras, the additional wiring and to cover the additional labor.
For how many cameras total?
For the one extra camera?
If you are truly committing to, at my count.
Nine.
Nine cameras.
Oh, okay. I don't think that has been agreed upon or even. So the first question is, the first question is. Four and two.
I thought we're doing away with the interior cameras.
No, I think we were going to keep those. We would. Yeah. As a matter of fact, that's the next, the next illustration I have. See, my question with the four is where, where are they going to go? What are the views? That's really my whole crux of that.
Question, a big vendor for this? Don't they do a rendering of this?
So if they do a rendering of this, it has not been provided to me, given that Kyle, um, my contact with EAI has been very forthcoming with all the information at the various stages. I don't think they'd get done a rendering. We probably wouldn't see a rendering if they do one until we actually sign a contract. Because the scope has been so in flux, no contract has been signed. So circling back to the preliminary conversation, if you wish to add additional cameras, no.
Right. Does not sound like to be the case. No. Well, okay, so when, did we go to them with this number four for the exterior? Or did they look at the building and say, we think that this is, that we would be able to survey?
So going back to the early fall.
Please.
The conversation that occurred between Kyle, George Miller and myself happened as we walked around. George was there to provide the context of information provided to himself and to town manager Matthews during the initial walkthrough with a Montgomery County police officer. Where they identified potential problem areas.
Blind spots, if you will.
Four exterior and two interior.
Yes.
Right. That was the original.
That was the original. That came about as we walked with the AI representative saying we were told that we should probably be monitoring the primary entrance and exits. I believe at one point the post office doors had sustained damage. Is that? Then my apologies, it's clearly getting late enough that I am forgetting.
My gosh.
Conversations. But we were told, monitor entrance and exits. And then just have a general perimeter sense to see people approaching. That was how we came with the four and two. Because we also talked about when we see people coming to the building, when we would anticipate people trying to come to the building. That was kind of an organic, it was not a hard and fast, I was told to request a four and two configuration.
Yeah, since we have, since, I mean, my vote would be to start with that. And if we have problems and we sustain vandalism that isn't caught by the cameras that we're going to start with, we can always add cameras later. So I would, but my vote would be for a minimal number of cameras to start and then see if we have a problem.
Okay, so that's one vote for the original scope.
Uh, two votes for the.
Two for the original scope?
Three.
Three for the original scope?
Guess it doesn't matter, but what I'd like to know is this. Um, no, I'm serious. What, what exactly, uh, will the four, where will the four cameras be placed? Because this is.
Well, but that's the question for the experts, not us.
So not necessarily.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
No, I agree. But I mean, I think Phil, I thought I heard you say, um, that you thought the orange ones would provide a pretty good perimeter. And you could live with maybe just having one on the north side. My thought is we're not necessarily looking for a hundred percent protection. A, we're wanting to put out some visible cameras, yes, discreet, but visible because we're looking for deterrence. And B, if a perpetrator does do some vandalism, they'd have to be pretty skilled at evasion to not cross one of them in whatever they're doing. And if they did, it's not, you know.
And that's the whole point.
Right.
Councilmember Schultz, can I grab the microphone for you before you begin speaking?
Do the diva thing, Phil.
I just wanted, my, yeah, my thing is just to say that, look, we've got entrances here. Entrances here. We've got an entrance there and an entrance there. And so I just wanted to be sure that we covered them all. Plus, we've had problems vandalism here. And so my thought was that you got that one, that one, that one, this one will cover over here from people coming in from that side. And so basically you've got, the only blind spots might be right here, right here, but you've got an entrance here. So the purple ones would include everything, but I'm just saying add an extra camera, probably that one. And then that would be it.
Right. To Jerry Lee's point though, C7, you'd have to either cross the train tracks in order to get across or know exactly where all the cameras are in order to evade them.
Right. And if you turn that camera a little bit towards the, towards, you know, if you put C7 and then turned it towards the building, you might get a pretty decent angle of that whole north side.
But I think, I think that the idea of letting the professionals.
Exactly. But I'm just saying, I, I think we could try four. You can always add another one later, right? If we find it's.
See what the experts say about four and then go with the two inside and call it a day, please. I'm sorry to be so.
But I want to say, Phil, this was enormously helpful to have the visual.
Thank you.
I thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
So just to make sure I am clear on my direction moving forward, since we've had some animated conversation. I am going to go back to the vendor. What I would like to do with council's blessing is put this on the screen for Kyle and ask him to confirm kind of which of the various orange cameras would be covered to make sure that we are at peace and okay with what the expert recommends for the four exterior cameras. If council at that point doesn't like the coverage, at that point we can revisit adding an additional camera to cover.
Sure.
Is that?
But is that, like, is, I don't want this to be on hold. Like, I'm ready for this to move forward.
Before we could always do an add-on later.
Then I will go back to the vendor, say we are ready to proceed with the original placement of four exterior to interior. We will have town manager Matthews sign the contract with council's blessing and we will work on getting the historic area work permit and.
And the best locations that he recommends for the best cover of.
Yeah, absolutely. And should their necessity require another one, then come back to council and we're like.
Hooray.
Thank you, council, for this clarification. We are going to move on to something that is hopefully also clear and easy to resolve.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to guffaw.
Was just to have them take a look at the second thing, because the second thing was a proposed interior one where it covered both doors instead of just one. So.
In the post office?
Yeah.
I will make sure to share it with them when we schedule that meeting.
Thank you again for that, Phil.
All right. Okay, the time is 10:10. And we are moving on to the contract award for transportation engineering services. Um, I, Chris Keller is no longer on the call, but I think that I misunderstood what he was saying about his concerns regarding the, regarding this contract.
Mayor, well, if I may, I'm happy to look back at my notes from.
Hours ago.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
I stopped keeping track of time in the council room and doesn't serve me well. So Mr. Keller, um, initially discussed variances and whether or not that'd be appropriate. He did want to make sure that council was considering the value of having staff do certain traffic projects. He indicated that he was surprised by the $40,000 price tag. I don't think Mr. Keller had the memo in front of him to reference, so I think it was kind of a.
He was rounding up from 38,000. That was in the memo.
That, that would make sense and it's a thing that we all spend some time. So his general comments were that in years past, staff had internally done certain traffic measures. He did point out that in the memo, there is a reference to a conversation I had with George Miller regarding, um, the Oxford access to EMS vehicles and it's kind of his thoughts of how the situation appeared to have gotten out of control at times and recommended steps that might resolve it without incurring significant cost to the town. That was the last note I had about Mr. Keller's feedback. So I will, with council's blessing, start talking about the memo and kind of where we are at. Councilmember DeBeau, if you wish to jump in at any point in time, thank you. But circling to the, um, quotes we received. As initially flagged at the February 13th meeting, um, we had a cost estimate for the four initial tasks that was within our procurement codes threshold for not needing to put a project out to bid. At that meeting, council had a rigorous discussion and asked for pricing for some additional tasks. The evaluation of the Rokeby speed bump petition that originated in approximately 2013. That came with an estimated price tag of $5,000. The evaluation of emergency vehicle access on Oxford Street based on flagged resident concerns was 3,000. And the inventory of existing stop sign placement and recommended modifications was $8,000. In total, those three tasks added $16,000 to the total cost estimate. And shot us from a $22,000 cost estimate for the initial tax to a $38,000 cost estimate for all tasks. $25,000 is our threshold. And that was also the limit, I believe, that was made in the motion at the meeting on February 13th. At this point in time, staff is asking for council direction of how they wish for us to proceed. If they wish to include all of the tasks, we will need to go through putting this out to bid. Um, I believe I estimated ten to twelve weeks, sorry. Four to six weeks to prepare a bid package and an additional eight weeks would be required to receive bids and evaluate them. I know at one point it was noted that we should make sure that any traffic survey happening included school day traffic to ensure that any children waiting for the bus are being dropped off were safe. With that estimated timeline of, um, six, eight weeks to put together a bid package and then another eight weeks to put it out and get responses to be evaluated, we would be cutting it very, very close. Um, I don't have any children in school in this area, but for those of you who do, am I correct? That school generally lets out end of May, first week of June, is that?
Seventeenth or something.
Sixteenth is the last day of school.
Um, then allow me to offer this one side comment of it sucks to be a school student in Maryland. Pennsylvania had us out by June 1. But.
Barb, can I ask a question? When I first joined the council, I remember one of the residents said he wanted an additional speed bump. And I thought it was Waymouth?
Yes, that's in the original scope. That's in the original 20,000. Correct. Um, it, I'm sorry, um, are you finished?
I did.
Barge it.
Um, you are welcome to barge it wherever.
Hmm.
The recommendation being made to council tonight to ensure the timely evaluation of the original tasks as well as compliance with the town's procurement code is to proceed with the original four tasks and the included meetings and such with Groves Slade and capture the secondary tasks as appropriate in a second contract that would take place in FY24. This would allow us to continue to make timely efforts on particularly the Waymouth Street speed bump petition, which is much more recent. I admire the patience of the folks on Rokeby. I feel comfortable in saying if they have been patient for about 10 years, I think they could hold off for a couple of months more.
If they still.
Though I understand it would be frustrating if you are one of the people living on that street.
And if I may add to Kayla's very thorough and very much, um, investigated report, um, I support what Kayla is, is recommending to stay within the original scope and budget so that we can move forward, which is something that we have an issue with around here. And, um, you know, once this is done, do 2024 with the next steps. Who knows, by that point we'd have probably three other things added to this or even taken off, who knows? But I recommend, I mean, I support and recommend the same.
The original items are listed, there are those bullets, right there. Those, those are the four that, that, that we, um,
Nice little bullet is meetings with council and residents. It is not a standalone task. It is a follow-up portion of the other four tasks.
Got it.
So.
Will there be the expansion of the surveys or that's supposed to be something later? Which in the original?
I don't service.
Which surveys?
Well, in other words, I.
If you refer into the Waymouth Street speed bump petition.
Well, there was a couple of them, but yeah.
There were a few and it was my understanding that I think it's slightly changed the scope, I would have to.
I'm not following.
Yeah, I'm missing something.
Okay, so I had recommended that when I looked at the, at the amount of, um, when I looked originally at where the, uh, surveys were going to be done, um, for instance, Argyle and Kennelworth, uh, avenue intersection, they were going to collect 12 hours worth of traffic counts on a weekday. And I had suggested that you have to be careful to include school cuts and also weekends seem to have a a different thing too.
Um, we did take the comments and I think Phil, you were not the only one who made those. So any concerns that were expressed about just weekday traffic counts, they, Kayla, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they subsequently tweaked their proposal to include, um, I think it wasn't just the Argyle, Kennelworth, it was also the Waverly, Kennelworth Triangle.
Yep.
Um, and I think there might've been one more that I'm drawing a blank on. Um, but Kayla did share that, um, those concerns with Grove Slade and they did tweak, uh, the proposal to, um, include those items.
And then the only other comment I had was now that we put out, um, that, uh, evaluation of emergency vehicle access on Oxford. I mean, I question whether or not we're now opening up ourselves to any possible liability if we don't consider doing something about this. Given the fact that if we have a problem, but I'll leave it.
But we've talked about that for decades. I mean, this has always been an issue. Kayla's done a very good job in, in reaching out to the Kensington Fire Department to double check and they report that they have not had any issues. And they are always, um, equipped and, um, able to get over and around any kind of, you know, issues. They do not report any kind of, um, problems with any streets, at least not in Garrett Park, if I'm not mistaken, Kayla.
They did not flag any issues. I can tell you from my experience with other fire departments. If they have an issue, there would be some poor resident on Oxford whose car windows were broken through for pipe to be run. And Barb or I would have received some very blunt and aggressive communications from the fire department telling us to get our act together and stop endangering people. Fire departments do not play about access. So if I had called them and asked them and they had something they were, uh, something to make me aware of, they would have done so.
So why is this on there then?
It is on there because it was part of the initially requested scope and I wanted to make sure that council had.
I, I raised it at the last meeting because I have personal experience of frequently driving, turning into Oxford and having to back out and go another way because I cannot get my simple Toyota Highlander through the street. But I am perfectly comfortable taking off it off of the scope of work and I will look for other ways to raise the issue. I think just because.
I think just because the fire department hasn't yet had an experience of not being able to get through that single block of Oxford. It's because they maybe haven't had to actually serve any residents in that block of Oxford, but I don't know that for sure. I don't have data.
And it's not that we're saying we don't want to consider evaluating that and figuring out if there's a solution to the very real problem of. Not being able to drive down the street. Just wanting to confine that.
Right, I'm comfortable.
Move that on to consideration after this first round of. Um, evaluations and recommendations.
Yeah, do we, do we really have to do an evaluation for speed bumps? What are they just going to be checking speed there? Couldn't we just kind of?
But it's also. No, but that's, I mean, this, this kind of goes back to to what Chris, um, Chris's point of like, this is stuff that we used to just do. In the town office and.
If I can say having several communities that were like the land of speed bumps, including Tacoma Park, if you've ever driven there, they're every. When you place a speed bump and I've worked in a number of communities that really love these things. Had one resident even construct his own when we turned it down. You can divert traffic onto adjacent streets, so just looking at one street in isolation and saying, do we think a speed bump is needed here? I I I think would be ill advised because you might just be pushing a problem someplace else. And I think that requires some professional expertise to sort of look at an area more holistically than just looking at the request very narrowly.
And there's nothing to say that that they, that we get the recommendation and the recommendation is that we don't do it. And then we say, well, okay, on balance with or, you know, comparing that with the residents' requests and. The other things that maybe the intangibles that that weren't able to be part of that consideration. I mean, we don't a hundred percent have to take the recommendations of the experts, but I think it is important to know what those unintended consequences could be.
And I'm sorry if I missed this, if we went with the original scope, might we be able to extrapolate what we learn? About the Waymouth Street speed bump to consider whether we would want to. Review the Rokeby proposal?
I mean, it probably is some, there probably are some similarities in terms of being dead ends and some other aspects, so. I I don't see why not, but I but I also don't foresee pursuing the second tranche of work. Until after the first is done, so we could make that determination about what additional work needs to be done. Later.
Yeah, in the, in the interest of time, both of our current time and future time. May, may I recommend that we move forward with the original budget and the original scope of those four points plus the meetings. As per the mayor's attention. And uh, go on to new business with all due respect.
So um. Are we, have, have we already allocated this, this, these funds? Or is that what you're needing us to do right now?
Um, once again, in calculating, I mean, I wasn't trying to be presumptuous, but I needed to come up with a carryover number, given the. The level of interest there appeared to be in the initial scope of work for projection purposes for FY twenty twenty three. I I did assume, um, in calculating the hundred and thirty six thousand dollar carryover that you did contract for the. Initial scope of work with Grove Slade and that that work would be completed by June thirtieth.
Twenty two thousand.
Yes.
Right, so do you need, you need us, you need council to vote on this to proceed?
Yeah, I think it would be good to know that we could proceeding. My guess is that we would likely, um, I'm kind of trying to shake out where we are in professional fees. Because this is where it would be booked. Um, there might just be a need to transfer some funds from the contingency account.
All right.
But I think if if a decision is made soon and the work can commence, I think you can absorb it within the existing FY twenty twenty three budget allocation. It's more the contract authorization that's needed from you all.
Okay. You guys wanna. Approve this contract for the, the twenty two thousand dollars?
For the initial scope, the four items, yes.
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 Fine.
I approve.
Okie dokie.
Okay.
Kayla, do you really want to step in this hornet's nest?
I am going to step on it.
Okay.
There's been public feedback, both positive and negative.
Okay.
And I will try and keep it concise and prompt.
But so just to be clear, we're not, are you hoping for action or is this like, you want to raise this issue so we can continue to talk about it? What's your goal?
The goal at this point is not for action to adopt. The only action that council potentially could realistically even consider would be. Telling me to either refine these numbers to account for your comfort levels. Or telling me that you don't wish to proceed, at which case we will shelve the project and I will turn my attention to various other.
Is this permit fees?
This is permit fees.
Okay.
So you have a decently robust memo in front of you. If you don't want to read the memo or if you prefer a more visual summary, you also have a lovely. Chart that I think really makes it clear. As previously noted, um, Mr. Chris Keller spoke in the meeting earlier that he thinks. Looking at the variance, given the amount of legal time and to a lesser extent staff time that is involved. Potentially raising that might be appropriate. He, I believe, also made a comment that it might be. More appropriate to raise it above the one thousand dollars that I'm recommending. I will also say over the weekend, some feedback was received from residents that was less positive. They were concerned that changing the fees would disincentivize people to improve their properties. I would like to be clear, that is not the intent of this recommendation. What this recommendation is to do is aiming to ensure that people who are getting a private benefit. Are the ones footing the cost. As it currently stands, when a variance is issued. And there are legal costs. That is not paid for by the person who is making the special request. It is being paid for by the town. The most recent variance had at last count. Over eight hundred dollars of legal fees. That is on the low end without having the attorney's bills directly in front of me at this moment in time. But eight hundred dollars of legal fees is not something to. Laugh at and town manager Matthews and I have discussed, the town attorney has increased his rates for the upcoming fiscal year. The recommendations are not meant to be punitive. They are not meant to discourage people. They are meant to say, if you're the only one who's going to be enjoying this benefit to your private property. We think it is reasonable and appropriate to have you pay for it.
Chris, and I think that the, that the residents who had those concerns weren't taking into consideration the legal fees. That I think that, I think that was omitted from their understanding of the situation.
The legal fees are the most obvious in terms of the variance. I do also have some recommendations for increasing. The cost to build a new home. That was also motivated by conversations about. It's not just staff time to review, it's staff connection and assessment of utility connections for a new property. And a new home. In terms of the demolition, as previously mentioned in the context of Yandle House, there has been significant time. With the town arborist to ensure that trees are preserved. Given that this town is an arboretum and that we value our trees. It is highly likely that any other property that would be demolished would require significant time. With the town arborist review to ensure that any needed restrictions on the permit are enacted. At this point in time, what I'm really asking council is. Is there a way you would like to see these numbers refined to be more palatable to you while still moving towards recapturing? The cost to the town? Or is this something that council does not currently have an appetite to consider and would like me to shell?
Is there a way that we could? Sort of have a variance request or something where there's a legal, there's likely to be interaction with our attorney. Sort of a retainer, like, let's say it's two thousand dollars and then. Depending on how much actual time is required, they would be refunded. Because not every, if, if every single variance costs a thousand dollars and some cost more. Then it would, then that would make sense to have an actual particular amount that averages out. But if some of them only cost two hundred dollars in legal fees. I mean, I get the headache of it.
Um, Mayor Welch.
Please.
Theoretically, yes, it would be possible to look at doing a deposit or retainer. There are communities in Montgomery County that have a similar structure. For the sake of as much of an apples to apples comparison as I could make, that data is not included in the chart, but I do have it with my other research. And I could share that with you. I will also offer the comment of if the concern is. Actually having the permit cost match what is incurred by the town. I have worked for and interacted with communities where certain fees are structured as cost to the municipality. Plus ten percent, that is an option. I am going to turn the microphone over to town manager Matthews, who had some information about.
Can I just ask a question, which is when Chris Keller was speaking, I thought he said that we didn't have legally. The ability to make, to increase these permit fees and I thought he made some.
Yeah, um.
Reference to that.
I can address that. So as a general rule of thumb, it's not just sort of a, it's sort of an inherent. Principle of municipal law, regardless of what state you work in. So the general principle is that your, your fee should be. You know, you don't have to dot every i and cross every t, but you should have a general sense that your fees are in line with your actual cost. He is, he is correct about that. You know, I, I did, I think Phil might have asked this question. I, you know, we haven't, we don't get that many variances, so obviously I had the. The most recent legal bill dealing with the, the one that you all considered, I believe it was back in December or January. I did try to go back a couple of years and see if I could find the twenty eighteen variance legal bill, but you're not required by law to keep. Years of things and we've been trying to clean those out, so I apologize, I couldn't find anything on that. Um, I did want to add on to what Kayla said. So anytime we have someone who, whether they're, you know, generally constructing a new home, there are certain things, but certainly. Um, what we see a lot of in Garrett Park is people who are adding on to their homes. There is a direct out of pocket cost for the town arborist because even though we're very fortunate to have a great land use advisory committee, in particular our chair. Um, you know, he's, he's not the consultant to the arboretum. Um, so I think there's probably two areas where we see direct, you know, out of pocket cost in terms of not just staff time. Um, and those would be anything where trees are involved. Um, and uh, Phil Normandy, you know, bills quarterly, I'd probably have to go back and kind of look and see what has come up, but I can think of a couple. Uh, there's two, there's a, a building addition on Montrose and there's a new house being constructed, which one of you is well acquainted with. Um, where Phil Normandy, um, had a lot of back and forth with the, with the builder. And we also, um, can recall a situation on Oxford where we've had some tree issues, particularly if there's non-compliance issues during construction. So I think, um, you know, Mr. Keller's comments, I think were very on point about the role of the land use advisory committee. And we're very fortunate that they take a lot of workload off of staff. Um, but I don't want to leave you all with the misimpression that there, it's not just Kayla's time, my time or Elizabeth's. In many cases, there are direct payments that we are making to vendors for some of these items.
But I do think that the, at least one of the residential comments, resident comments that we received. Was making the point that in order to live in Garrett Park, we all pay higher taxes and. One could view that as a benefit of paying higher taxes. We get a higher level of service and that might include paying fewer fees for some of the, the benefits that. That we live in town. I just want to make sure that we're understanding the comment we've got. That's the way I understood that comment.
Yeah, and generally I understood the comment in the same way and, and once again, I, I can just share with you, I guess, how. The communities I've worked in have approached it. So I, I would say as a general rule. What a resident pays in, in taxes and certainly by choosing to be a municipality. Um, to live in a municipality, you're taking on the, the additional financial burden for paying a municipal tax in addition to your county property tax. In addition to your state property tax. Um, and I think in Garrett Park, it kind of comes down to the property tax. I would say most of the communities and I think the general rule of thumb. Is that what someone pays in taxes goes for those services that are sort of considered. General community benefits, so it's maintenance of your town facilities, it's making sure you have good roads, it's making sure your parks are well maintained. I think where many communities draw the line is when, as Kayla was alluding to. You have something where clearly the interest is, is private, the beneficiary is private. And I think when someone is. I, I would argue adding on to their home or building a new home. The, the benefit of that is accruing to that private party. So I, I think it's somewhat of a different animal, in my opinion at least. Than maintaining streets and things that are of general benefit. Um, but ultimately that's a policy decision you all have to make. I'm just trying to share with you philosophically how. Um, I've seen communities handle it throughout my career.
Enough, and if I may add, isn't that? That was the same argument I was trying to make in earlier this evening in regards to ADUs. Does it benefit everyone or standalone individuals?
Barb and Kayla, my understanding is these fees that you're proposing is really designed to recoup the cost. Of providing these permits. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Uh, um, once again, I want to reiterate, I think, you know, Chris Keller is exactly on point. Inflating your fees where they're not representative of your cost, I would agree with him, is problematic. So we're trying to assess what we spend on a typical application and trying to recoup those costs.
Okay.
Solely.
Okay, so the, so, so the question is. First question is, do, does council have an appetite or a desire to? Um, further analyze possible increase or further analyze increases in fees? So the, so the first question is just, is Kayla on the right track or we, should we drop this?
I believe she is on the right track.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
With continuing, Phil, what do you think? Continue, look at your like.
I'm fine to do it. I mean, I don't know what we're.
Well, the, the analysis needs to be done in order to justify the increases.
Okay.
Okay. Is the point.
I'm, I'm fine with it, but I just want to ask a question along this line. Do we have to do this by ordinance? Do we do it by, um, what? How, how does one do this?
I may, I'm, I may have mentioned this, I think, perhaps your meeting at the end of February. Typically, what I've seen. Um, is that there is a, a fee resolution that is adopted either in conjunction with the budget or sometime before the new fiscal year takes place. Um, as I mentioned at your meeting in February, I do have some concerns about the way some of the traffic fines were constituted, meaning. Um, they may not have been properly put in place, because I think there was a, um, as I understand it in talking to Run Bolt. It appears that the responsibility for setting those fees was somewhat delegated to the then town manager. And that authority really is vested with you all. Um, so what I would recommend, um, regardless of what you do on the town permit fees. Is that we basically go ahead and create a fee resolution. Um, I don't know if we'll have it ready, especially if you want more information on this one, we wouldn't. But sometime prior to July first, um, Kayla and I draft a fee resolution and bring that back for your approval that would sort of encompass. Everything that we have on the books now, just to make sure it's properly put in place.
Okay, great. Well, I'm fine with proceeding with looking.
Yeah, so we're, we're agreeing to proceeding with the analysis, correct?
Okay, so are there categories? That. You consider off limits, like, don't you dare change the price for. A permit for new residential home construction. Is there of, I mean, are these the four, Kayla? I, I hope I'm asking the right questions, but. Like, if these are four categories. Of fees that you're looking at. Is that an appropriate question to say, are any of these off limits? Council doesn't want you to touch, keep it as is?
I would say that is not only appropriate, it is helpful to know if there are particular fee types that council. Wants to look at keeping low. For a variety of reasons.
Okay, so that's these four that you have.
These four are the only ones that I am recommending adjustments to. I would ask the council, look at the last page of the memo and we can go kind of bullet by bullet. And it can just be a casual thumbs up, thumbs down. Are you comfortable with the idea of establishing a fee for a demolition permit?
And we're not charging one now?
We're not charging one now.
I thought we were.
We are not. That was part of, sparked this conversation was when a different municipality reached out and Barb had to do the research and kind of had the uh-oh moment of. What do you mean, we don't have?
The wrong line, I'm sorry.
So, do we want a demolition permit fee? First question. Second is, do we want it to be two hundred and fifty dollars or do we want to consider something?
We want to see the analysis.
Well, that's.
Okay.
That is what you're asking, correct?
Yes.
Just whether or not the topic, not the amount, just the topic. Just whether or not the topic, not the amount, just the topic.
We're not deciding on the amount tonight. We're deciding on whether or not we want.
Do we want a, you want there to be a demolition permit fee?
Yes.
Great. Do we want there to be? Do we want to see analysis of an increase in variance fees in order to better recoup?
Yes.
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 Okay. Yay, this is fun. Do we want to increase fee for new construction?
Do we want to do an analysis?
Can we just say we want to do an analysis? Cause that's what we're asking for, right?
Well, except she's done the analysis.
Right.
Yeah.
I was under the impression from earlier that we hadn't done a full analysis.
What the chart is.
We have done a comparison.
That's a comparison. Analysis of our actual cost.
Right, Councilmember Bennett, kind of to address all the various questions and the points. What you have in front of you is a chart of a comparison, just to get a sense of what the general costs anticipated by other municipalities are. This is meant to be just kind of a, hey, do you want to go in this direction document?
Okay.
What we are trying to confirm is one, do you want an in-depth document where there's a breakdown of here is what the recommended fee is, here is the data that I looked at, here is why this is an appropriate amount.
And these are our costs.
These are costs.
Yes.
I think we're, we're looking for a minimally sufficient, we're, we're not asking you to do a, you know, a thesis project.
Now for new. We are currently for new construction, charging.
So do we want to analyze or here, get analysis?
Yes.
Okay, and for additions? For, for addition?
Yes.
Home addition.
Yes, for the analysis.
All right, so.
Now, before, I'm sorry to do this, but as I do, if you look on the last page, you had this nice little grid here, which lists a bunch of stuff that people in the county charge. And so the question I have is, do we want to look at any of these? It's, um, so it's the last page and it's a little chart at the bottom and it's got Garrett Park versus county average. And so I've noticed, you know, for instance, like deck porch roof, you know, we're, I guess in line with that one, but we don't have anything on permit revisions. Do we want to do that? Do we want to do anything with?
Are you saying add more categories?
Add more categories.
Right.
Fences, pods, are there any of these categories that we should be looking at?
Uh, I would say stick to the four we've, for, for, for we've got and go from there because.
I mean, as a resident, I like keeping it simple too.
Yeah, I think the rest are related to individuals who already live here. And I think I'd like Jerry Lee's theory.
Kayla, so as previously stated, the intent is not to make it impossible for residents to improve their property. It's just to make sure that if they're getting the benefit, they're footing the bill. More or less. So no, to answer Councilmember Schultz's question, I don't feel we need to add more categories. I will.
Would we have any costs incurred if we do fences or decks, porch and roof? If we wanted a permit for those things, would the town have to incur for those?
Yeah, typically unless it's in the historic district, we don't actually regulate fence construction. The time involved would be my letting, a, writing a letter to the property owner, wanting to install a fence that they can then take to Montgomery County to basically say, we don't regulate this.
Okay.
Um, cause a lot of times if they don't have something from us, they get spun around and
Right.
Right, it jams them up basically.
And what about deck, front porch and a roof?
The typical one that comes up with a roof is solar panels. Once again, we don't typically regulate that. So I will let the county know that, write a letter saying we don't regulate them. Trying to think of any decks that have come up. The, the porch I'm thinking of was actually the one that involves a variant, so that became very involved.
Well, Jeannie Mendablet just put a deck on her house, cause I helped her design it.
Okay, yeah.
But we just let people do it and we don't get involved.
Not, not to interrupt, but just based on Kayla's research, she already looked into what costs us and those, these are the four things that cost the town.
Okay.
Money that we don't get back.
Okay, basically I triaged, where are we bleeding the heaviest? That is where I would like us to put a band-aid.
Okay.
So I am happy to do that information and bring it back to you. I do want to point out that on the backside of this chart, you do have a breakdown of the cost per square footage that most communities in the region use for additions to existing properties. There is no one true consensus. And part of why I made the recommendation of kind of having two hundred and fifty square feet as our threshold is, cause that seemed to be in line with the median of the other communities. But that is something that if council wants to raise and they want to say, you know what, we want the lower fee for any additions up to four hundred square feet, that can be adjusted.
And what do we do for the, when people want an addition? Do we, what do we, what is our involvement?
I, I, it's, it's. So, so I'd like to get that information, but maybe not.
Not today.
All right.
Lisa, let's go with, look for a follow-up email from me, probably on Wednesday, since I'm out of officer training tomorrow.
Okay, so ten forty seven. Arboretum Committee, anything exciting that, that we need to know about so that we can?
Is meeting on Wednesday night, the fifteenth, here at Town Hall at seven PM and we'll be reviewing the spring planting list.
Okay. And Councilmember Max?
Uh, for archives?
Yes, please. Archives.
Archives. Russell Einhorn has met with Claire and they're working on the hundred and twenty fifth anniversary. And they're planning the May twenty first event, which they're calling Archive Live here at the decades to celebrate the hundred and twenty fifth anniversary. It'll take place in the Town Hall and they'll plan to show different things that have happened in the Garrett Park history, when they're meeting again on March twenty first. And they're preparing a small exhibit, which will go great with Dave Almy's presentation in the post office library to celebrate the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the B and O Railroad. So there's going to be a little exhibit in the, in the glass case there.
Very nice.
And, um, and you're still working on the requests and processing data and cleaning up the existing collection.
Okay. I hesitate to ask if there's anything else, cause it's ten forty nine, I'm gonna say we're adjourned.
Okay.